The town and the management and the staff and the public and the council and advisors, both in-house and out of the stream of thought, all have to work together as we move forward to accomplish what we need to, not just what we want to, but what we must accomplish in the near future, in the year ahead. So I want us to really, just with open minds and open hearts, look at the potential that we have as a community. We are so blessed to be in this town and on Cape Cod. We have people with PhDs and master's degrees and specialties in all kinds of technology, in business, in government, have retired here, but they're willing to participate and join with us to make our future the very, very best that it can possibly be going forward. We have to look at what technology we can bring to bear on the problems that we are facing. So working again with government and the public and NGOs, non-government organizations, as well as businesses and entrepreneurs, we have in front of us the ability to really change our future and to help us with not just our survival, but our growth. With the climate change making us face the reality of increasing water and storms, we have to look beyond just today to how we survive in long-term disasters and how we can recover from any kind of disaster that we've experienced together. So while in this together, and today's going to be an exciting day, please keep an open mind of all the possibilities that we have to make possible the very best in our whole region and in the whole state. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
President Hebert?
Yes?
We need to do a roll call.
Okay, we'll do that roll call now. Thank you.
Councilors, Hebert?
Present.
Raff Grissette?
Present.
Starr?
Present.
Stein Hilber?
Here.
Bogan?
Present.
Neary?
Here.
Dagwan?
Shaughnessy?
Here.
Levek?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Snap?
Here.
Cullum?
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you very much. All right, so I will turn this back to you, Elizabeth, and you will moderate throughout the day.
Yes, thank you so much, Paul. And thanks, everybody, so much again for being here and giving your Saturday to this effort. It's a beautiful day, at least where I am. And speaking of beautiful views, it looks like most of you already are in the habit of doing this, but if you are able to have your video on while we're talking to each other, it does make it feel much more like we are actually meeting in person. So whenever that's sort of logistically possible on your end, that's always appreciated. That said, feel free to take care of yourselves, meeting on Zoom. We're so lucky to have this technology, but it can also be kind of wearing, sitting in front of it for hours and hours. And we have some breaks built into the day, but feel free to take care of yourselves. At any point you need to get up, stretch, use the restroom, get a refreshment, whatever, and we will all try to kind of just keep chugging along here. I'll go through exactly when to expect the breaks, but feel free to take them as you need them. Let me just very briefly review the agenda for today, and I will share my screen so you all can see that. Here we go. So we will start by hearing from the town manager and the director of finance some reports. We'll take a little break at 10:30. Then we will jump into the sort of meat of discussion of the day, which will be discussing sections of the strategic plan and proposing revisions. In the middle of that, we will take a 45-minute break for lunch around 12:15 and return to continue discussing sections of the strategic plan. And then at the end, we will save a little bit of time for you to all hear from each other. I think it's been a hard year for everybody in multiple sort of dimensions, but it seems like a nice time to pause and reflect on what sort of brings you to do this act of service and to serve on the town council and some reflections on just what has happened during the past year for the town. And finally, we will just kind of clarify some next steps, and we'll have you out of here by 3 o'clock. And just a word on the sort of approach we're taking for revising the strategic plan. First of all, thank you for submitting responses to the survey, those of you who did that. That was helpful in planning. I had some conversations with council president and vice president to go through that and to sort of think about how to best use our time together. So that feedback was very helpful. And one thing we decided to do today that is different from usual was to focus more deeply on a few sections of the plan rather than sort of hurriedly going through everything. So you'll notice that we will discuss several sections, but not every one of them. And that is not because the other sections won't sort of continue to be carried forward or that they are any less important, but it seemed like the most sort of effective use of our time together to go dive into a few areas a little bit more deeply and flesh them out a little bit more. So that's what we're going to be doing today. And I'll explain that in a little bit more detail when we get to that phase, but just so you know kind of what to expect. Let's see. It seems like you're all pretty familiar with using Zoom, but if you're having any issues, Maggie and I are on Zoom, you know, all day, every day. We're happy to try to help troubleshoot if need be. And like I said, if you can keep your video on when you're, especially when you're kind of engaged in discussion, that's really helpful. Let's see, are there any other logistics that would be helpful before we kind of jump in here? All right. Then maybe with that, I will just turn it over to Mark Els. And let me know how you'd prefer to sort of handle this. We have a little bit of time held for sort of question and answer and discussion following your presentation. And so let me know if you prefer to sort of hold those for the end or if people should sort of raise their hand and grab your attention as you're going through. What is easiest for you, Mark? I think you are muted still, though.
Yes, I'm unmuting here. Good morning. Good morning. I'm good with this being kind of an open discussion as far as what Mark and I will do. It is structured, so half of mine is a general introduction that we already are all familiar with, but I think, given the importance of strategic planning, it's worth noting a few things that are certainly in the forefront of my thought every day as I come in to serve as the town manager in Barnstable. And then get into more of the specifics of the strategic plan and a couple of areas where I focused and then offering some general suggestions. I know I did it in my survey, but I just wanted to point them out. And then Mark will, Mark Mill, Finance Director, will, you know, get into some of the critical fiscal policy issues that as we think about how we envision ourselves moving forward, you know, relevant to our purpose and our mission, that we need to contemplate because they are kind of fundamental as we will see as we look at our strategic plan. And as identified by past councils, some counselors still here, but we also have new counselors. And, you know, be thinking about those critical base components of what a strategic plan is. So can you see what I've got up on the screen at this point? Am I sharing that correctly yet?
We see it, but it's in the sort of slide sorter view. If you want to switch to slideshow.
Yeah, oh, no, I know. I just want to make sure before I
But we do.
Go through my routine here. Let's see, can you see that?
Yes.
All right, good, because this way I can go on tangents for a long time. So I have to keep myself focused here, or else this could be, you know, a prolonged presentation. So, well, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you all. For me, as your manager, but certainly as a person who's studied management and what establishes successful organizations, public and private, having a clear strategic plan, having a clear purpose through your mission statement really defines organizations. It defines them in being able to be successful in those things that they want to achieve. It defines them in being able to use the limited resources we all have so that we can focus on those items and those things that are important to us that we want to achieve. You know, and it really allows us, as I think I'm going to frame here in the next few minutes, to take our rightful place, not only on Cape Cod or Massachusetts, but really as a destination. And a destination, not just domestically, but beyond. And, you know, one of the things I certainly have come to, I knew, but I've come to understand as your manager, is that we do play that role. And that needs to be part of how we envision ourselves and the rightful place that we take in the marketplace and how we present the programs and services that we offer through the town of Barnstable. So sharing that with you, obviously, you know where we are. We're the big player on the Cape, certainly, double to triple the size of anybody else. And that really does play into who we are. Many times I'll have conversations with my peers either across the state or nationally. And the complexity, everybody thinks we're Hyannis, first of all, but they also, that's how they identify, Cape Cod and Hyannis. They also identify us as small, quaint. They have no idea of the year-round population. They have no idea of the influx of total population when we look at all those people who come, stay with us, come have second homes here and then live here year-round. And they really have no idea of the number of visitors. So we've got two coastlines, very different coastlines, an incredibly sensitive piece of land that really has to be in the forefront of our thinking with everything that we do, every day, every decision. You know, I can't reinforce enough that it just isn't Barnstable or the seven villages of Barnstable. We play a critical role for commerce in the state of Massachusetts. And I hear that over and over and over again. And when we're not at the table with a clear vision for where the town of Barnstable is going, it not only creates problems for the town or the region, but for our state. So it's critical that we think about the economic side of this, certainly. And it has to be balanced, and I'll say that later, but the economic side is our regional role in commerce, healthcare, transportation, education, and then government. We are looked at as the center of government for this region. And rightfully so, again. We have seven villages, very different villages, and critical to not only bring us together with a vision as a whole, but also recognize those differences that we each have in our villages and try to maintain those, because that's all about the wonderful quality of life here in Barnstable. You can actually have it all. You know I form a government. I use the 2020 numbers because it hasn't changed and the capital's down in 21, but I still use the 2020 because that's really representative of what I think we will see as a more typical fiscal year. As you all know, we reduced capital in '21, but that isn't typical. That's in response to the situation we're in. You know, we're over a $200 million organization. We're doing, yeah, $25 to $50 million in capital a year, and that isn't really fully funding the capital need, but that is what we can manage within our fiscal resources. We have over 1,300 full-time employees. So not only is that significant for us, it is for the region. We're one of the biggest employers on Cape Cod. I think we're second to Cape Cod Healthcare. We, as alluded to by our president, we've got over 40 boards, committees, commissions, almost 300 seats, highly qualified residents here in Barnstable who have chosen to dedicate their time to our organization and to your vision and to help us achieve that. And without them, we would not do it. And it is critical that we consider that and them as we move forward with our strategic plan. Mark's going to go into much more detail about how we allocate our taxes, but you can see our public education is an enormous part of our operating budget. Police, Public Works are the next two biggies. Those are the three biggest pieces of the pie, you see. And then we get into more smaller and more detailed chunks of how we allocate our budget. A large, complicated staff, certainly. I told you, between schools and municipal, we're looking at over 1,300 full-time. You know, much of that falls under the town manager. What doesn't fall under the town manager is within the school department or, in a sense, with our Barnstable Municipal Airport operation. And I should probably pause for one second and say that with me today are Mark Mill, our Finance Director, Andy Clyburn, our Assistant Town Manager, Meg Mayo Brown, our Superintendent, and I saw Katie Service out there from our airport. So I want to thank all, that's not the full senior team, but those are certainly significant team members on our senior management staff, and I thank them for being here. When I talk about complexity, again, we're envisioned many times, and even our own residents see us as a small, quaint community. And I think that's wonderful, and that's kind of the image we want to maintain. But in reality, what you are overseeing is one of the more complex systems related to our roadway infrastructure. I mean, we're fourth or fifth in the state for the largest roadway infrastructure in Massachusetts, behind Boston, Springfield, Worcester. And so a lot of people don't realize that. They don't realize that we have over 500 miles of road in Barnstable that we maintain. They also don't realize how large of a community we are geographically. We are one of the largest in the state of Massachusetts and have very different geographic areas, from north side to south side, from east to west. Certainly, we have programs and practices throughout our community. And, you know, to go from one corner to the other, especially during the summer months, can actually approach 45 minutes. So from a management standpoint, it is a logistics challenge to try to make sure that we are servicing our entire community and taking into consideration the complexity of our community. Lay on top of that, that we drink the water that we stand on top of. That water, that, you know, the issue of water is probably, you know, foremost, at the core of who we are. And whether it be that we drink it and that we recreate in it and that we aesthetically are drawn to it is, again, at the core of who Barnstable is and certainly who Cape Cod is. The complexity side of that is certainly that losing that water source, whether it be groundwater or if some form of surface water, would be devastating to us as a community and certainly regionally and statewide. So that is always in the forefront of our thinking when we're creating our purpose and we're establishing our strategies and we're prioritizing how your management team goes forward with managing these issues. We've got plans in place. This is a real quick color coding of our 30-year sewer expansion plan. The little crosshatch areas are some of the former areas that were identified, and the red, yellow, and blue are some of the future areas. The gray is where it exists already. The big loping areas of tan are where our drinking water comes from. So you can see that when you take out the Great Marsh, which is the north side, half the town sits on top of the water it drinks. So everything we do in Barnstable, within the thought about the municipal services that are provided, needs to consider this, needs to think about what are the impacts of standing on top of the water that we drink. We've got also a little bit of a unique structure here in that the only water in town that's provided by the municipality is the blue area over on the lower right side, which is Hyannis. And I do have to, you know, share with all of you, even though I sent the email, that I hope you know that your Hyannis Water Division received the Utility of the Year Award this year. So, you know, many times we will receive, you know, we will be critiqued and questioned about how well we are doing. It's wonderful when an outside organization shares with us what internally we already know. And so that was a real honor that they are, you know, that New England Water is recognizing us as the Utility of the Year. But we have Barnstable, who has their own water supply. We have Centerville, Osterville, Marston's Mills, who have their own water supply, can do it. And then West Barnstable doesn't have a water supply. Each private property owner has a well. So again, a complex system. Fire departments are all separate authorities. So, you know, that has to be built into what we're thinking on doing. It actually behooves the importance, it speaks to the importance of communication. Because if we don't prioritize communication, we will not be as successful as we need to be. Throw on top of it issues like emerging contaminants and the very sensitive nature of our water supplies. And again, when I start to talk regionally, those dots way over to the right, that's Yarmouth's water. So not only, and this all moves, there are no political boundaries when we think about groundwater. So again, a complex system that needs to be managed, and we already know we are challenged in many of these areas. Begin to look across town at where we might get water in the future. The darker blue areas, the medium blue are the areas we're looking at. Again, with this complexity of separate authorities and water districts, this is a complex issue. Throw on top of it, resiliency, coastal resiliency. We have developed, in the most beautiful areas, residential and some commercial. You can see this is the north side up along Barnstable Harbor area. Certainly, as we begin to look at where our velocity and flood zones are, we know that during certain events, those areas can flood. And as we begin to superimpose, when hurricanes come in, we begin to see a pretty clear picture that, you know, as water levels rise between now and 2100, and there are simulated examples of this already, if we're looking at feet of rise, and we already know that this is the existing condition, we need to begin to frame out what our vision for infrastructure is and what our vision for, you know, the various sorts of development that will occur is. Because some may say that 80 years away is a long way, and, you know, most infrastructure is 20- to 50-year planning. I think that we need to be looking closely and building this into our vision of how we invest, how we regulate, and how we manage our community's future. So jumping into our strategic planning process, and I can again say to you that this is a fundamental building block of what we, we look at this every day, since I've been your town manager, every single manager, and now it's permeated all the way down to boots on the ground, they get a copy of this. And they think about the fact that we are here every day to protect the town of Barnstable's quality of life and unique character, engage our citizens, and enact policies that respond to and anticipate the need of our community. It's not that difficult to think about, okay? We're unique. We want to have our citizens involved. And we want to make sure the things that we're establishing in the form of policies, rules, regulations, ordinances, make sense. They're enforceable and they're practical, okay? And so we lay this out in our vision, in our mission statement. You lay this out for us in this vision statement, and I think it's a good one. I mean, I've worked for the town for 31 years in seven different roles, and I think this is a good one. I also live here and raise six children and have a wife. I think it's a good vision. Underlying that, sound financial management, open communication, and a balance. I think the greatest challenge we truly have is if we want to maintain this quality of life and unique character, given how complex we are, that we have to be able to find this balance. Balance between those challenges and how we maintain our vision. So obviously, that adapts over time as different factors are presented to us. And that's why we do this every two years. But it is just such a fundamental building block to how we look at providing programs and services, how we look at developing our budgets on an annual basis, how we kind of check against things like our local comprehensive plan and then subordinate plans to that, like our water and wastewater and et cetera. So it is, again, an integral part of all of that. It is not an academic exercise. The most successful organizations, as I said in the beginning, have clear vision, know what their priorities are, establish strategies and tactics. And we are critical to our state, certainly, and beyond. And we have to have a clear strategic plan that guide us into the future. And it defines the purpose, you know, it applies to our whole organization. And that's why I tried to frame it upfront. It isn't just us. It is much more than us. It is our authorities. It is our place in the region and the state that we need to be looking at. Because that's how we're looked at from the outside, and we're needed from the outside so that we can function properly. So it's critical that we establish our goals. For me, I need to give guidance to our staff as we develop our structure, our operating and capital budgets, and then get down boots on the ground to providing service, programs and service. Now, this is your current structure, and again, I think it really helps in all of our thought because it's simple, it is appropriate. The one suggestion that I would have, and I think we actually talked about it back in 2018, was that I think communication needs to be at the same level comprehensively as finance. I really do. I think finance and communication are fundamental to establishing a strategic plan. It isn't a separate effort. And so when I have my communications staff, and you, you know, we greatly appreciate the support we've received from the council in helping us to prioritize it. I know it's a priority of the council and the community, but... So we created a separate Communications Director, and under that role are doing this. We are looking comprehensively. They see all the pieces, from schools to police to Public Works to budget, and they begin to help us formulate a communication strategy. And that's critical. For us to be successful, we absolutely need to do this. Now, I'm going to kind of get a little more in the weeds for this last few slides I have, talking about finance, communication, and then a couple of suggestions in some of the other areas. But what I've done here, and we have Director Mill, so he can certainly help us as we move through this. That's already the goal, and he and I have spoken about this. And we think it does represent, you know, both your values and then the prioritized areas and certainly the goal for financial are right on target. We don't have concerns there. What I did, though, and I'll share with you, and certainly he can speak to it if you would like, is I provided a little bit of a tweak to the strategies for your consideration as you move forward in discussion and the italicized areas. You know, I broke up a couple of the statements and then I've added a couple of things here. And, you know, the biggest addition really is the last item. And it is to support and promote contactless financial transactions and transition to digital information. You know, we knew this was in front of us before we entered into this emergency situation with COVID. We were planning for it, but it accelerated our implementation. We have gone contactless. We have trained a workforce in five months to work remotely and work effectively. And we are at, if you're wondering, we are at, and Director Millen will share this with you shortly, but we are at our performance level as to, we're not down 80%, 60%. I even hear some communities saying 20%. We're at 100%. And we're delivering service. Now, we're delivering it a little bit differently, but we are delivering service. We need to begin to contemplate this within our vision and how this will transition us over the next decade as an organization that again wants to be high performance, that wants to deliver that product that is held, you know, we have a differential advantage and we need to capitalize on that. So this will help us do it moving forward certainly. Under communications, again, Lynn Poyant and I discussed this as I did more broadly with my staff. We feel like what was in place is good and is representative. Certainly, it can be tweaked any way you'd like. And one of the pieces though, that we feel like we're not doing well enough in is we communicate out well, quite honestly. I think we need to prioritize some tactics here under strategies to more effectively solicit public input and promote active engagement. I really do. I think many times we get the message out there, multiple times through multiple channels, but then we really don't know how the message was interpreted. And we really don't know whether we have broad and comprehensive engagement. So I think that's something we need to collectively look at. And hopefully you will, you know, consider that as something that you might want to put in as one of your strategies. Finally, going into, you know, some of the more detailed pieces. And I don't know that you want me to get into this in detail, but I just wanted to share with you under economic development, support efforts to grow the blue economy, education, transportation, healthcare, retail, hospitality, arts and culture, and professional service sectors. Prior to this, it basically said arts and culture. And I think we really need to look broadly at who we are and that critical role that we play for the region and the state. And we need to have, we need to have strategies in place to look at all of those economic centers and make sure that we're moving forward appropriately in each. There is no one more important than the other from our perspective. We need them all. Certainly, I think we need to get a little into the weeds maybe perhaps, even this year if you would like. Certainly, my staff and I are available to get into performing a SWOT analysis on economic development, really in each of these areas. And, you know, you know what that is. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. And it's perceived as a, it's perceived as an academic exercise many times, but it really isn't. It really sits down and helps us to define about Barnstable what our strengths and weaknesses are, about our town, about our organization. And then we look at opportunities and threats in the marketplace. And then we go back to our blue economy or education or healthcare. And we begin to see how we fit with each of those and where we want to go in the future. I hear criticisms at times about, well, you're not taking advantage of more manufacturing or blue economy. You know what? That just doesn't happen. That happens with solid planning, clear vision, and an allocation of resources to be able to move in that direction. So for us to do that effectively, we can lay out that path, but we need to collectively sit down, talk about this and spend some more time so we can really deliver. Regulatory process and performance, continuous improvement of permitting process. And I just broadened it a little to throw in, you know, it's policies, ordinances, rules, regs, development of customer-oriented culture, which you know we're well on our way for that. And implemented contactless service where appropriate. I think we need to really, you know, put those in and reinforce them. And then even though this is stated in another section, I forget where, I really think we need to perform a comprehensive zoning review with a recommended, with a recommended set of modifications. And then we can take that forward through you to our public and begin to discuss. That seems to be at the core of many issues when we're trying to go forward with implementation of those priorities that we have. On a public health and safety standpoint, one of the things that our police department has identified is we actually miss opportunities relevant to grants because we don't have a clear statement in our strategic plan relative to support the development and use of community policing strategies, et cetera. You can read it. So our police chief and his supporting staff provided me with this and asked for the council to please consider a statement like this in their strategic plan if they feel appropriate. And that will open up doors for us to pursue outside funding sources. And then finally, housing. You know, I think we really need to think about focusing on improving quality and availability of housing for vulnerable populations. Over and over again, you know, I hear the challenges that our community face in housing our workers and housing our elderly and housing those who may not have the means that many of us have. And then sitting in many capacities as your manager, I also see us wrestling with, okay, we've got a market rate proposal coming in and we certainly need market rate housing, but we have limited resources, for example, through the housing trust to dedicate. Is our priority these vulnerable populations or is our priority housing in general, market rate or workforce level? I think clarification there because we have such limited resources would be very helpful. So if you would want to consider that, that would be appreciated as well. Now, I'm not asking our superintendent to speak and I'm not going to speak to the education priorities, but I did want to provide them to you because we did have a lot of discussion this year at budget time about our school department and its budget and its vision and its priorities. Now, and we all know that our school committee is elected to do this exact thing. They developed a, they do this, they're doing it now. They're doing it August, September, October. This is, I believe, a draft of where they are, a final draft. I think there may be a vote coming up in October if it hasn't happened already. I have emailed this to you. I put it into my presentation. Because they basically do, this is why they're elected. They do this for us, they give it to us. Our opportunity to participate is through, you know, direct interaction. You know, you have liaisons certainly, but it can be through any mechanism. On the management side, know that the superintendent and I speak about this and everything, quite honestly, on certainly a weekly basis, sometimes daily. And I think that this should be provided to you for consideration in your strategic plan. These are the goals. One, two, three, and four are the goals that they have drafted. So I think it's important that you have this in front of you. I think that given the complexity and the importance that I described in this, if yours and theirs are different and they have the authority to establish it, that creates a real conflict.
Could you please email that to us, that particular school committee priority list?
Yes, we will, we will do that.
And have it during our discussions, thanks.
Yes, I will.
Could I interject and just, the school committee approved their goals at their August meeting and approved their strategic priorities at their September meeting. So it's an approved document. I think the formatting is slightly off. There's five goals there, but it just didn't, I don't think it transferred well to the slide. Thank you.
I may have reduced, I may have reduced into one goal. Sorry, yeah, sorry, ma'am. But yes, Jen, I will email that to Cynthia and then she can distribute it.
Our discussions today, I know that's on my list, thank you.
Yep, okay, thank you. That concludes my overview. And certainly I'm here for any questions that you have. And then Director Millen was going to speak to financial, financial goals and certainly policies so that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that grounding and that call to action. And I do see some questions. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Just for the record, now that we have the full screen before us, I wanted to make sure that it's acknowledged that Council Dagwan was joining.
Yes, well noted, I let her in.
Chris, did you have a comment additionally or just noting that? Okay. Any other questions for Mark? We'll also have some time to discuss after Mark Millen presents. Oh, Paul, go ahead.
Could we get the actual, the entire presentation that?
Yes, it's on the T drive. Cynthia has it and whatever mechanism. It's a big, it's a big file. So it's under, I don't know if you can access T drive, but it's T drive under town underscore manager and then TMR. And there's the presentation, so. But Cynthia can get it too, yes.
Paul, go ahead.
Yes, and it's just more of a process question for our day today. I think Mark brought up a lot of great points, many that already are contained in our strategic plan, but also some thoughts about how the world has shifted, you know, via COVID and how the town has responded and planning to respond. Where do you see in our agenda that we will have a time to grapple with some of these ideas?
Yeah, I think, I think we should do maybe a sort of check in before we dive into the sections of the strategic plan and see if we want to sort of adjust how we're spending our time at all. And we're happy to do that. I think we had in discussions with Paul and Jessica, we had sort of teed up four or five topics, but if we want to shift those or if we want to expand those, I think I hadn't envisioned a specific item dedicated to sort of planning in times of COVID, but maybe that is wise. I don't know if it's, if you all prefer to discuss that as its own sort of animal or discuss that in the context of each of the sections that you feel is important to review. But we'll hold a few minutes to sort of decide how best to approach that once we get through these presentations.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Paul.
Thank you. I got distracted at the beginning here. Did you introduce Maggie to the group?
I did.
I didn't want people wondering who she was, but I might, I obviously missed that, so thank you very much.
And, well, and let me just elaborate, take that to say that my colleague Maggie is taking, is here to help support by mostly taking notes and helping sort of document the discussion. That'll be even more important when we get into the sort of nitty gritty of dealing with the strategic plan. And we'll probably, she'll share her screen so that we can sort of be looking at the areas that we're working on together. And she will help produce the sort of product coming out of this discussion that will be the revised plan. Jen, go ahead.
Yes, I think that, you know, for the purposes of dealing with COVID and pandemic preparation, it's important that we all acknowledge that every department should have some sort of a strategy to deal with going fully remote. Because it's clear that the corner office has been working nonstop 100% throughout this entire thing, where I feel like the town council has definitely taken its foot off the gas. So for me, it would be a really important thing moving forward to make sure that we have our own strategy lined up on how, as to how we're going to deal with projects moving forward, how we're going to help the corner office and how they can help us with a plan moving forward. And making sure that the things that the people want to see on the agendas are actually on the agendas and we're doing good work and constant work even when we're meeting in our basements with Starry Night behind us.
Deborah, go ahead and then Paul. You're muted though, Deborah. Deborah, if you're able to, there you go.
Yes, I just wanted to know if we could get somewhat of an update on recycling efforts. I know that wasn't spoken about too much in this presentation, but just to see if we're getting closer to the goals of trying to improve recycling efforts. That was a big issue on one of our other strategic planning efforts.
I, while we did brief the council within the last three months, I believe, on the significant changes that have occurred over the last couple of years with recycling. I think we shared our vision, or, you know, how we were approaching it certainly of, you know, reuse. Yeah, we will try to reduce the waste stream, reuse the waste stream, and then recycle the waste stream because that's what the market will bear. We can, unless we're just willing to pay almost, you know, what, $120 a ton to get rid of recyclables when MSW is running at about $60 a ton. So that's regular trash. And much of what the state has in place is, there are specific banned items and we still address all regulatory issues. But in areas where we used to have higher performance in recyclables, now we're trying to either divert the waste stream to be reduced or reused. And then looking at recycling, not as the primary way to achieve that objective, but as a secondary way. Because quite honestly, the market, we are not collecting enough. If we, if we had to have an aggressive recycling program in the current recycling market, number one, we question whether the product's being recycled to begin with. And secondly, and if you want me to explain that, I will, but we question that. And then secondly, we'd be up about at $400 a sticker. So we are trying to keep that down and manage it. You know, we're at 250 this year. We've held it flat and we're subsidizing it at this point so that it doesn't have dramatic rate impacts. But that is our, that is what we had articulated, Deborah. And that is, we are going to continue that. I think you'll see more public service announcements and continued communication to try to get people to rethink. And I have shared with the council many times that, and the public, that personally, a person, I use myself always as the example, I am far more message resistant than my children are. I educate them and then they're correcting me and they love to correct me. So, you know, I think we focus on our youth and we have them out there reducing and reusing, and then we'll see change. I think if we leave it to the adults, it will not happen. And so that's where I think part of our communication needs to go and be enhanced.
Thank you. Paul, I think you were winning and then I see Jessica as well.
Thank you, thank you very much. So just on Council Dagwan's question and Mark's great response, we are also working regionally for waste, to look how we can work as a region to reduce the cost of our waste management as well as our recyclables. And there's a grant to that effect to get specialists in to help us. So we are trying to address that from a number of ways. The second thing I want to respond to is Council Cullum saying that we took the foot off the gas. I don't know where you stand on this, but I put in four to six hours almost every single day communicating with boards, with committees, with our staff, with the vice president, with leadership. So there's no instant cure. When we say we will not respond to public comment, there's no instant cure when we do not respond to communications at our meetings, when we don't give any reports for years from committees. I look to the chairs and the leadership of those committees to put some, some foot on the gas. So I don't take that criticism lightly. And we're here to communicate with one another. So I just want to stress that. We're all trying our very, very best. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jessica.
Hi, thank you. And thank you.
Hi, thank you. And thank you, Mark, for putting together your presentation. I also want to recognize the fact that the superintendent is with us and, and, and that you highlighted the strategic priority areas under education. And, and I know they're looking because of what, what transpired during budget season. I know that the school committee in one of their revisions to their priorities are looking at, you know, collaborating with the town council with the respect to the budget and strategic planning. And I know I mentioned that our January meeting, when we do a joint meeting with the, the school committee for me is a little bit too late as far as in the budget process. So I hope that Meg can bring back to the school committee, the desire that the council collaborate with the school committee at an earlier stage in the budget development process. And I know, Mark, you mentioned that you have almost daily meetings with Meg. And I don't know if a subcommittee of council and, and school committee members should periodically check in with the manager and the superintendent to help develop the budget so that we don't, we aren't faced with, you know, some division on the council as far as the budget process going forward. It was difficult this year amidst COVID and, and I know the schools were trying to, and Meg is trying to develop a budget amidst all that. And it was difficult. But I think I, I can go on record and have gone on record that it is, it's high time that the council and the school committee work together and look at the, the portions of the budget or the revenue sharing amongst the education and the town as a whole because of what we are facing and the financial ramifications of our comprehensive wastewater management plan and how that's going to affect everybody. So I hope that that can somehow be realized. I don't know how, but I, I need to see some kind of, you know, hard, hard talk about, about that. And I think Mark Milne has got to participate in that as well, as well as Gareth. Thank you.
I, in response to, if that's. Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Yes, we, Meg and I are available anytime to have those discussions certainly. And I guess I would defer to you and Paul, Jessica, how you want to interface with the chair of the school committee. So. But we, we stand ready. Mark Milne's certainly ready to discuss this broadly. And if we want to get into the details, I think it's important, and I, I know we've had this discussion, I think it's important to have controls in place, especially because there is a clear difference between how the schools under the law and charter have to approach the budget process and how we do it. And it really can lead us to, you know, confusion and conflict at times. And so that's to none of our benefit. And Meg and I have established a great working relationship and team here. So yes, we're available, we're ready to go. And I just think it's more a matter of how, how do you see the interaction between chair of, or chair of school committee and town council leadership coming together and then we will accommodate that.
If I could just build on that and add that when the school committee was developing their strategic goals and priorities, they were hopeful that they could meet in some capacity with the town council as early as late October or November to start that conversation. So thank you.
Great. Glad to see that.
Here. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions in response to Mark's presentation? And then we will have an opportunity to hear from Mark Milne and have some discussion after his as well. Okay. Mark, let me then turn it to you and you want to share and then we'll save some time to discuss after your presentation as well.
Okay, thank you, Elizabeth. Good morning, counselors, fellow staff and Elizabeth and Maggie. Good to see you all this morning. I, I know you have a very busy day ahead of you here with the strategic planning. So I don't want to hijack your meeting with a detailed discussion of the finances, but I do want to provide you. Can everybody see my screen? Okay, first of all. Okay, good. I do want to provide you an update on the town's financial condition as well as some of the, the steps that we've implemented to monitor our current fiscal situation in FY21. And finally, with some recommendations going forward and developing the fiscal year 22 budget. You want to, you know, get instructions out to departments soon. And of course, provide you, you know, this financial information as you contemplate any changes to your strategic plan. So first of all, the fiscal year 20 budget. We, considering the pandemic and everything, we, we actually ended the fiscal year in an extremely strong financial position. And some of that was a result of the proactive steps that we took towards the last quarter of the fiscal year to freeze hiring, cut back on non-discretionary spend, spending, as well as the continuation of some of the conservative revenue estimate, estimation practices that we've been conducting. The only, the operation that had an unfavorable budget variance last year was our golf operation. And obviously they were impacted by the COVID situation dramatically because it was one of the busiest times of years, the last quarter of the fiscal year. And of course, they had to be shut down for a period of time. So we ended up with a favorable budget variance in the general fund of almost $7 million. One of the best years that we've actually ever had. And what does that do for us going forward as we start contemplating the development of the fiscal year 22 budgets? Well, it will significantly increase our free cash, our estimated surplus at the end of the fiscal year, which we'll be submitting to the state for certification in the near future. We plan on closing our books for fiscal year 20 next Friday on the 18th of September and will soon file all of our financial statements with the state, provide those to our outside auditors who will begin their independent audit in earnest. But we are looking at an estimated free cash balance of almost 18 and a half million dollars, which is $3.8 million more than where we were at the beginning of last year's budget development. That's almost $12 million higher than what the town council's 4% policy reserve is. So even all of our enterprise funds have healthy, relatively healthy reserve balances with the exception of a couple. The golf, of course, being impacted by the, the public health emergency has seen their balance shrink. But the recent action by the town councils to approve the community preservation committee funding for their debt service in fiscal year 21 will restore that loss of, or that reduction in fiscal year 20 in their free cash. So all, all in all, we're in very strong financial position to respond to any unpredictable events that may occur in fiscal year 21 as well as developing the fiscal year 22 budget. So what are we doing in fiscal year 21 as far as monitoring the budget? Well, we're looking at every single line item month over month. This is rolled up to a very high level by category in the general fund. And we're, we're tracking those revenue sources month over month compared to the previous years to see if there's any indication of where we might be impacted significantly by the public health emergency. But to date, I'm happy to report that we haven't seen any significant impact on our revenue sources. For example, fiscal year 21 through the first two months, we've collected almost $3 million more over the first two months than we did the same period of last year in the general fund. We also have an opportunity before us, once the state passes their budget for fiscal year 21, that there may be potentially another $563,000 of state aid coming to us in the form of chapter 70 aid that we have not used in our budget development for fiscal year 21 yet. That was a late development. We received the news of that last month. They have made a commitment to level fund chapter 70 aid as well as unrestricted general government aid. But then they also said that they were going to make a commitment to provide some minimal increase in aid for chapter 70 for all communities. And that's a $563,000 for Barnstable, but they haven't passed their budget yet. So we really can't act upon that until they pass that budget. We've also reduced all of our revenue estimates and all of our, in our local receipts category as well and our rooms taxes. You'll notice we have no money yet for rooms taxes. We will receive our first payment at the end of September. We received that quarterly. We did reduce that estimate by $500,000 or about 25% to be conservative, knowing that that industry was going to be impacted by the emergency. So by the end of next month, we'll have a better sense as to what's happening in that area. But local receipts, we did reduce by almost $2 million or 1.7 million. And we're actually tracking better through the first two months, collecting 1.689 million versus 1.535 million last year. So again, we haven't seen any significant impact yet. I'm cautiously optimistic. But I don't want to say we're not going to be impacted at this point. We don't know yet with any certainty. As far as the enterprise funds go, similar situation. Of course, we significantly reduced the airport budget. Their revenue was down, but that revenue from last year also included a significant payment received from WS Development upon the resigning of the new ground lease for the Cape Town Plaza. So that's in last year's number, which artificially inflates that. But we know airport operations are down as a result of this, but our airport enterprise fund is in a position to be in its strongest financial position over the next several years as a result of the CARES Act funding that they received. So we have no concern over the airport operation for the next few years. Our golf operation has performed tremendously over the first two months of the fiscal year. Revenue's up almost $200,000 over the same period of last year. As you know, this is one of the few opportunities residents can take advantage of practicing safe social distancing, doing, participating in an outdoor activity. So we're seeing very strong revenue performance for the first couple of months in our golf operation. Our solid waste operation revenue is artificially up as a result of people renewing their residential transfer station stickers later. We gave people additional time this year. But all in all, every enterprise fund operation is performing as expected to date. Another, and we're monitoring all of those line items individually week by week as we are with the general fund. Another thing that we've implemented is monitoring our cash balances for all of our operating accounts. We've built a cash flow projection that, that estimates out what our cash flow coming in, in, out is on a weekly basis throughout to the end of the fiscal year. And then we're plugging in the actual results week by week. And this is how the month of August looks. And the only highlight I wanted to show here was that our cash balance for all of our operating accounts is $10 million, almost $11 million higher at the end of August 2021, fiscal year 2021, compared to where it was at the end of August last year. And a lot of that's a result of that surplus we generated in the general fund as well as tax collections coming in better in fiscal year 21 for the first two months than they did the same time last year. Again, another, another control mechanism that we've put in place to monitor our cash flow carefully to make sure we quickly identify any strings that we may see on our cash flow going forward. Some of the other budget monitoring measures that we've implemented, we've set up payroll encumbering in all departments. We've had this in place in the school department for a number of years. We've expanded it to every other department. This provides us the opportunity to identify in real time any vacancy savings that we may have, which will help us with our planning purposes. We're also tracking all COVID related expenditures in unique accounts as grant opportunities have provided us some, some relief in this area. And we're also consistently reviewing any of these relationships between the economic indicators and any potential impacts they may have on our revenue streams. Finally, for fiscal year, for fiscal policy and the FY22 budget development recommendations, I believe the town manager has shared with the council the document that I prepared that included all of fiscal policy areas for consideration, what are existing practices and what our recommendation going forward is. As you know, we want to start the budget development process in fiscal year 22 very soon. The, some of the things that were, these are some of the recommendations that we're providing as we enter that period. And as to continue to increase our tax levy in accordance with the limitations of Proposition 2 and 1/2, which we have consistently done for, for decades. Continue to allocate any property tax, new property tax growth in excess of $1 million to the capital program to enhance funding for the capital program. We know that in past history, we need about a million dollars of new property tax growth just to cover the increased costs in our operating budget. But any excess, we really want to direct towards the capital program as the needs in that area continue to grow. We're also, at this point in time, looking to limit our capital program to really projects that relate to a public health and safety issue or the preservation of an existing asset to, to prevent its deterioration. Trying to avoid new projects at this point in time until we have more information. We, you know, we don't recommend building something new and having to maintain that under the current situation that we're in. So we're really going to be focusing initially on those types of projects. And then we can adjust going forward as we have more good data as to where our financial situation is, is trending towards. Also, after providing for an increase in fixed costs, we're recommending to continue the allocation of any remaining new revenue growth on a 60-40 basis between school and municipal operations, consistent with what we've done in the past. This provides us predictability in our budget development, better collaboration. It eliminates the use it or lose it mentality that departments may have if, if they're, at the end of the fiscal year. We, we see that working successfully now as departments return unexpended funds at the end of every fiscal year as opposed to trying to encumber it at the, at the last week of June to, to, to spend it all down. And it also provides protection for any particular operation in the event we have a significant reduction or in any particular revenue source. We're also recommending that we consider using general fund reserves if necessary to cover one-time cost increases or any increases in recurring costs to avoid service reductions, particularly in those services deemed necessary to continue. With $12 million of excess reserves above the town council's 4% policy reserve, we don't need to target the council's policy reserve to do this. We have excess savings and, which puts us in a very good position to, to preserve services for our residents under the current circumstances for a period of time. And if we do have to make budget reductions, we can do it in a much softer way over more, over a longer extended period of time if we strategically use those reserves. And we do anticipate that we will more, more likely than not see, have to see rate increases in our solid waste, water and sewer operations to cover their capital programs and their operating cost increases. So that concludes my comments today. I'd be happy at this point to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. And Mark, let me just, and then I'll go to you in just one moment. But Mark, let me just say, we turned off your video because you were, oh, there you go. You turned it back on. Good. Because you were getting a little crackly before, but hopefully the bandwidth is back now.
Oh.
But, but you're clear now. Go ahead, sir. Are you Counselor Bogan? Sorry, I don't know your first name.
Yeah, it comes up as D Bogan. It's David. That's correct. Mark, first of all, I know I've told you independently, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say it publicly. Thank you. You're worth your weight in gold. The town is lucky to have you. Quick question regarding the slide that listed the, the year-over-year changes. The one that caught my eye was the one on top on property taxes, which rough justice suggested it was about five, five to 6% over last year. The question I had was whether that was largely attributable, attributable to new development increases in valuation, but then, or both. But then I think you later said it's also a function of receipt of greater payments this year compared to 2020. Can you comment on that?
Yes. Yeah, that is, Counselor, a reason.
Yes. Yeah, that is, Councilor, a result really of better collections and an increase in the tax levy. The tax levy did go up in fiscal year 21 as a result of the budget. And so there, there is more taxes to be collected, but we are about 1.2%. Collection rate is about 1.2% more than where it was at the same time last year. So it's a combination of those two.
Interesting. Thank you.
Chris, go ahead. Just unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. I'd like to echo Councilor Bogan's compliments of our town manager. We are very lucky to have him. Can you explain, Mark Milne, why the collections are up and the new policy or strategy or approach that has been done back?
Yes. Well, last year, the council approved the consolidation of our town treasurer and collector's office. And it has been our commission to improve the collections, the collection rate for all of our taxes, not just property taxes, but excise taxes as well. And I have to commend our town treasurer, collector Deborah Blanchett, Deborah Watson, and her staff and the efforts that they have put in to do that. They really have worked hard to collect those payments. They've sent out timely demand notices for back due payments. We've also are processing them a lot faster. As you know, several of you have contacted me about comments you've received from constituents about checks not being cashed for tax payments. And we've eliminated that. That doesn't happen anymore. There's no more trays of uncashed checks waiting to be processed in the collector's office. We've, we've eliminated all of that. And their hard work has really led to higher collection rates.
Jessica, go ahead. And then Jen.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate it. You know, you talk about general fund reserves. Just relevant to the special school committee meeting coming up, where they're looking to approve near a dozen new employees to the town. How is that going to be handled in the budget process?
I'll, Meg, correct me if I'm wrong, but these are, they're going to approve these new positions, but they have to fund it within the existing budget allocation that they have. They do have a couple of reserves that they could tap if necessary. If they can't make it work within the existing budget allocation. They have a reserve for school choice and they also have a reserve for a circuit breaker. They could tap into some of those reserves if necessary.
Jen, and then I think I believe Paul was raising his hand as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment Mark Milne on an excellent job with regard to the tax payments. That was the biggest cluster that, I mean, that has, I, I just really was astounded by how many constituents within a three-month period came forward complaining about their checks being uncashed, zero communication from that office. And it's something like that that can take down a completely professional organization, especially when you're dealing with taxpayer money. It was, it was a really terrible thing and it was a charter change that made that happen. I think Councilor Hebert was on that committee with me and I don't remember who else was on it. I'm sorry, it was a while ago, but we had five or six different things that we pushed forward to the legislature. And that was one thing that, that definitely came back to benefit, I think, I think both the town and the constituents. So great job on that. I'm happy to see that, that people are happier with the service. Thanks.
Thank you.
Paul, go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation, Mark. And I concur with the other councilors on many calls I received, people panicking whether they were going to get charged finance rates because their taxes had not been received. So that, you know, putting it under your purview certainly is a win. When you're running an organization, any type of cash flow that you have coming in, it's nice to get it in the till, not to have it just hanging around somewhere. Just as a follow-up with FTEs and, and the budget process in general. When employee benefits come into the issue of new hires, businesses, employee benefits can actually run almost as much as the salaries that are paid out. But I'm under the impression that, that the employee benefit cost actually falls under the general fund. Is there a way to make those or is that in fact true? In other words, if you have DPW or school department or any of the enterprise funds, when a person is hired, the salary gets, gets accounted towards that department. But how about the employee benefits? Where does that fall in? Is there, if it's not in that department, is there a way to make those costs? So we really have a true cost of what that employee runs?
Yes, it's a good question. We, the employee benefit cost is included in the general fund as well as all enterprise funds, depending upon where the position is budgeted. So we do separate benefit costs between our major operating departments. We also, also some of our benefit costs are covered by some grants for grant-funded positions. But we, we used to, within the general fund, we used to include employee benefit costs within the specific department. But that caused budget problems for smaller departments. If they had an employee, if they're a small operation, I'll use our legal department for example, Karen. Four-person staff and only one of them is taking health insurance. And then all of a sudden, we replace two of those staff like we did last year in legal, and they both come in and take health insurance. We have a major budget shortfall in the legal department. So to avoid that, we consolidated all employee benefit costs into the fixed cost area of the budget. And that allows us also to identify collectively what the entire benefit cost is for the general fund as opposed to distributing it out into individual departments. It's harder to see that clearly. Again, that transparency issue. We were receiving a lot of questions as to, well, what are we paying for employee benefits across all departments? And now it can clearly be seen that way within the budget. But we can easily do an allocation out to all departments from that fixed cost category to reflect what the fully loaded cost is for each operation.
Thank, thank you, Mark. I think that that's important, especially when you get into the larger departments where even if it's just a memo item, so that really, as you just said, you can then really appreciate or understand what the cost of an employee runs the town in terms of the big picture. When we get into revenue sharing agreements, things like that, if you have a large employee cost, it's kind of, lack of a better word, off ledger, it can be distorted a little bit. And I think that that would be helpful.
We show it in the budget book under every department. We do show what the projected actual from the previous year and what the projected benefit cost is for each department in the actual budget book. It's not budgeted that way, but we do show what that allocation looks like. And just for your information, I think we estimate anywhere from 35% to 40% of the salary is what our employee benefit cost is tracking on average.
Makes sense. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We have time for maybe one or two more questions before we'll take a pause. And obviously, we can continue discussing afterwards. Paul, go ahead.
Thank you, Mark. It appears that the recommended policies going forward are very similar to the ones that we have had in place for the last several years. And I know that CFAC has wrestled with some of those and had made some recommendations, which I believe were sent to the council. But it's, it sounds like we're, you know, moving forward with a very similar course. One of the, the big items though, is our comprehensive waste management plan and how we're planning to pay for that. Do you envision us having any discussion today? Or is that something that we're going to look to our future to look at the variables in terms of how we're going to manage that expense?
I think Town Manager Alz has a, an idea on that. I think he may have discussed it with council leadership, that we were going to discuss that in more detail than a future council meeting.
That's correct. I, I actually see it as a two-step process. You've already received the fiscal policy summary initially. And then receiving no feedback, I went to Director Milne and asked that he add both our current practice and our recommendation. So I've shared that with our council. We would be more, I'm going to ask that we do a workshop on that general fiscal policy. Within that, there are, there's certainly a category related to our comprehensive wastewater management plan. But I would be more comfortable looking at policy for our comprehensive water management plan because I think water and wastewater are so closely tied. And even though the focus is the wastewater, we, we need to look at both. They, they, they are, there is no separating the two. So my hope is that we can move through the first, the general fiscal policies as outlined. Mark summarized some of those today. And then immediately following, get into the water wastewater. And my hope is that we will conclude this, this calendar year. And we will have those policies as they stand or updated because there is past practice, but it merits revisiting. The two of note, if you haven't had a chance to look at what I've submitted yet, under the comprehensive water management plan, it is a very general statement with a list of bullet items of areas we need to discuss. And that's going to merit a workshop, maybe an independent workshop with nothing else on an agenda. Secondly, the, I think it was the last item on that summary that I had forwarded to you all is the question regarding capital projects that for, and none, no better example than wastewater of where we do not have the capital or operations within our existing budget. And therefore, will we consider a debt exclusion or prompt 2.5 override? Or is that off the table? And Director Milne and I will go back and we will quantify that if it's off the table. And we will come back to you with recommendations on how to achieve our objectives. But we really need a 30,000-foot look at that question. And I'm hoping that we can come forward with a recommendation. I do not want to go to our public with the upcoming sewer installation associated with Vineyard Wind and not have a clear answer as to how this is being funded. So I, I think that would erode certainly my credibility as your town manager and certainly, I think collectively, our credibility. So, and we did leave that hanging a bit as we moved forward with those appropriations. On the other side, we weren't being reckless at all. Director Milne has instruction and has followed that we currently do have specific reserves in place relevant to wastewater infrastructure. And he is to alert myself and through me, I will alert you if we exceed the capacity of utilizing those funds to pay for anything we've obligated to. Okay? So basically, we're not on the hook for something that we don't know how we're going to pay for it. We may make policy decisions moving forward that we change that and therefore extend the life of those existing funds. But Mark's got, he's got, he's throwing, he's got a red flag in his back pocket that he's throwing at me when we reach that point that we don't have reserves to cover anything I'm asking you to obligate to. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a follow-up. You know, some of the bigger kind of vision questions that I think we sometimes don't have an opportunity to address in regular council meetings goes to the heart of our, one of our points in our mission statement of providing an equitable, equitable balance of resource allocation to improve the quality of life for our residents, businesses and visitors. I'm aware that, you know, in addition to wastewater and water, we have that huge network of private roads in the town of Barnstable. And while we have a mechanism to help improve those roads, I, I sometimes wonder if it, if it actually meets this goal of an equitable balance. The fact that we have private roads, I think was a decision made by, you know, past councils and staff to offload the cost of new development onto the development and the residents that were going to have those private roads. And at, and I, I wonder if it really is, you know, something that should be reconsidered at some point because the cost to improve those roads is, is quite a burden on some of our neighborhoods. Some of our neighborhoods who have the means might be able to fix the roads, but we have roads that are continuing to deteriorate because the mechanism to improve them is too expensive for some of our homeowners. So I just want to throw that out there because as we're moving forward with our discussions of infrastructure for wastewater and water, that, you know, we may relook at our whole issue with private roads in the town.
If I might?
Sure. Yep.
Excellent point. I think when we look back to the last expansion of sewer and when we went out to two override votes, one for searing, one for private roads, the reason that occurred is exactly what you're describing. And I would go further, having been your public works director for a decade, you cannot separate the two. Private roads are where our sewer expansion, half the time, will occur. So this is the time to look at that issue and that policy and how we will install these sewers. And will we take those roads over in that process? And therefore move forward with a new road, a public road associated with a sewer or not? And I think it's a difficult road to take if we choose not to. I can tell you, one of the first things I did in 2002 is bring this to the town council's attention. And actually, they had just accepted over 60 private roads with no increase to the operating budget. And that's what forced the issue. I went in with an operating budget request and was denied. And so therefore, we absorbed 62 roads with no additional money. And that meant everything else got done a little less. And that's not the way to manage an infrastructure. And so then, at that point, the town council created the Roads Subcommittee. And actually, nothing's really changed dramatically except that legislation that allows us to spend some of the, you know, wastewater-related money on private roads. But based on what I just said, that does make sense because we're going to have to go out there and as we put utilities in the ground, make road improvements and some of those roads are going to be, half those roads are going to be private. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All, I want to just respect the time that we've promised to give you a break. I see a, is it a burning question from Eric? Very, very brief, and then we will just postpone.
Just quickly for publicification, because it was kind of brought up that we offloaded public roads to private roads. We haven't done that. I think there is some misinformation out there that about a decade ago, a lot of, a lot of the street signs were updated to say private, but that was just for public information. That wasn't an offloading of public to private. Those were private. We just, the town did that so that people understood, you know, what, what their roads were. I just want to be clear on that because a lot of people think we did offload public roads. We did not do that.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification. Okay, all, I'm going to give us at least a 15-minute break until 10:50 or so. In fact, actually, why don't we preserve the 20 minutes and we'll come back at 10:55? Yes, Mark?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
My, my staff is released at this point. And I am available or I'm not sure, Elizabeth, how you want to proceed with the council when you resume this meeting. If you could, if you, we have, number one, if there's any questions for the remaining staff. And number two, how, how, how would you like to proceed relevant to any of them staying or myself?
Yes. Paul, do you have an opinion about that?
I believe, Mark, that you are going to stay around for the next, the next session or not?
That's fine.
I will say, Mark, just, you know, FYI. So the first two topics that we were planning to cover were finance and communications sort of cast maybe more broadly as governance. So I think if you feel like you, you know, if you have the time to be here for those, I'm sure that would be valuable, but I don't. But I don't know what your time was promised for, so.
No, I am here to serve you all. I just want to make sure that the council, I mean, the council may want to talk amongst the council on this issue, and I don't want to impede that, that's all.
So again, my understanding was that we thank all of your staff and that we certainly thank the superintendent for joining us this morning, as well as the Assistant Town Manager. We thank you all and Mr. Milne. So it's up to you, Mark, but I thought that you had suggested that you'd stay for the first two sessions. But.
That's, yes, yes, sir. I would only ask council, would you like Mark Milne to stay where you are going to discuss finance?
Councils have any feeling about that? Or we can go to finance through you. Of course, Mr. Milne is welcome to stay if he would prefer.
I'm available.
You would be available? Yeah, okay.
He's the finance guru.
Okay.
A Saturday meeting like Mark, look at him.
Okay.
Well, thank you. That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
And let me just ask Paul and Jessica if you could stay on for a moment so we could just touch base. That would be great. And everybody else, you are relieved and we'll see you back on this Zoom at 10:55.
Thank you all.
Let's see, do we have Jessica? Oh, yes, we do. Oh, good. As the squares were reducing, I was losing track of where you all were. So thank you, sorry to cut into your break as well, but just wanted to quickly touch base. I found that to be a really helpful beginning of the discussion. And I can tell that the council members are already kind of digging in. And I wanted to just sort of test with you if you feel like we should proceed as we had planned. It seems like there's interest in other topics besides the ones we had outlined. And so I just wanted to temperature take with you how you'd like to proceed.
I think we should stick to the agenda. But it might be that, you know, we don't need to allocate quite as much time on one topic or another. And if we have any added time, that perhaps, you know, query the council on what they'd like to focus on that's not on there. Or maybe ask that question prior to getting into the finance, governance, and infrastructure. So you have an idea of what's, you know, how people feel about it.
Yeah.
From a broad sense, you know, again, we know that we're going to have a wastewater and clean water finance workshop in the near future. Already, you know, Jessica's got a date kind of picked out, which I think is excellent. And so again, if we get too much into the weeds on any one area, I mean, just in its broad discussion, I think it points to a need for more discussion, obviously. But I think if we want to get through the full agenda for today, we have to stay at, you know, that 30,000-foot and not get into the details.
Okay.
And that's, I'll tell you right now, Elizabeth, that's not an easy thing to corral these counselors with.
Right. No, I understand. And I think, I do like the idea of beginning when we return back just by sort of checking in with the group, saying these were the topics that we'd put. It's sort of the highest priority. If we get through these and have time to discuss others, we welcome, you know, diving into some other topics and just sort of get buy-in from the group on that approach. And I think having both marks stay for at least the first two topics will be very helpful. And then, and then Paul, to your point about sort of 30,000-foot view, I think I do want to stay at that sort of strategic 30,000-foot view, so not sort of, you know, discussing the details of implementing the CWMP or something. But on the other hand, I think what we haven't, what we have imagined is doing something that's a little bit more meaty than only at the strategic goal level, which is kind of where it is now. And does that still feel right to you?
Yes.
Yes.
And I just got a text from Council of Beck saying that I think it's important that we talk about the schools, very important. But again, that conversation can only be about budget, as far as I'm concerned. We cannot talk about the things that belong to the school committee. So I just throw that out. So you're okay?
That could be incorporated in finance, absolutely. Because it's already a strategy within the finance heading anyway. So we could expand on that if we needed to.
And I could, I couldn't, either I or you, Paul, could sort of name that at the beginning, that we know that there's a lot of interest in discussing schools. We know that there's the need to have this meeting between the council and the school committee coming up. But as it relates budgetarily, that can be discussed under the umbrella of finance this morning. Yeah. Does that sound good?
That's good.
Okay.
Great.
And I just want, I just want to emphasize, I just mentioned, I'm sorry about the little exchange between myself and Counselor Cullen, but it was obviously tense. But I just thought an attack on the council and leadership, I was not going to just sit down and pretend it was not said. So sorry, but I hope that didn't create tension in your thoughts, Elizabeth.
No, I think, I think you're right to respond if it feels like, you know, you want to sort of have multiple perspectives heard, so I think that's fine.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Okay.
Enjoy your break.
Everybody go pee and get a drink and take care of yourself. We'll see you in a few.
So Elizabeth, have you had a dog before?
No. That's the right question to ask, though, I know. I, you know, if I can raise a human baby, I think I can manage a puppy, but.
Well, you know, it's funny, I grew up, my mom bred dogs growing up, so I actually used to get kicked out of my bedroom and I had to sleep on the porch. When one of our females would have pups, because she would give my bedroom to the dog. And because she didn't have an outdoor facility that was adequate. And so anyways, I grew up with dogs all around me. But they're like, they're like babies that never go away, you know, they're, they're, you know, you got 12 or 15 years of. So that's the, to me, that's the difference. It just, I have two and I've always had dogs. And I, I, I have a bunch of kids and then I had two dogs, three cats, all rescues. And, and so when those two dogs passed and all the cats went, I convinced my wife, we were heading in the right direction. And now the kids were going to grow up and go. And, you know, but that's not what happened. My, my, one of my twins was just wanted nothing else in the world but a puppy. So I got one. And then once I had one, you have to have two. So we have two little dogs now. And I had never had little dogs and I thought somehow that I'm a big dog guy. And you know what? You know, they're awesome. So they, they, it makes no difference. So have fun. That's, that's great.
It's good. I think, you know, the, the guilt of parenting in a pandemic did feature, you know, somewhat in the. Like gotta provide another playmate here. Anyway, but what happened so far? I'm a little sleep deprived, but I'm happy.
Good. You did, it's in a pen, right? You use in a pen?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Good, good, good. That's the way to go.
Elizabeth, did you receive the PowerPoint that I sent you and Maggie?
Yes.
The town manager? Okay, good. That means the rest of the council did too, because I was all, very good. Thank you.
Yes, got it. And I'll let us know if for some reason you haven't gotten that email from Cindya. But she did send it around and welcome back, everybody. Hope you had a good little break. Looks like we're still waiting for a couple more folks. So I'll give it just a minute so that we can all be on the same page when we get going here. Right. Well, just to keep us on track, maybe I will kind of tee us off here. So we're about to get into the sort of meaty part of the day and I just wanted to take a minute to kind of frame set here. Just to begin by saying that I really applaud your taking the time to examine your strategic plan. As Mark mentioned at the beginning of his presentation, it sounds like your plan is really used. It's used to set policy. It's used to sort of determine the best course of implementation and at all levels. And zooming out and looking at sort of a high level strategy is important to not kind of lose the forest for the trees there. And so I think this is an important exercise and it sounds like you have a very strong plan. And you have this plant, this habit of sort of periodically checking in and course correcting and seeing what else needs to be addressed. And so we hope to help you do that helpfully today. And as I mentioned earlier, the, our plan in order to use our time most effectively. And to ensure that we're spending sort of sufficient time on the topics we do address was not to try to talk about everything in a sort of cursory way, but to delve a little bit more deeply. And so here, here is what the approach that we had anticipated and that I discussed with Jessica and Paul was. And you all can kind of let us know how this sounds to you. But to, to jump in item by item for the ones that we plan to cover, first look at and review and revise as needed the goal statement. And then the same thing on the strategies. And then work together to name some key actions that you really want the town to be pushing forward over the next couple of years. In, in those priority areas and even identify some indicators to help you know, a couple of years from now, how will you know if you've made the kind of progress you are looking to make under each of these priority areas? So that is sort of a new part of this that we are suggesting building out today. And as we're talking through this, Maggie will be taking detailed notes. And as it's useful to everybody's discussion, we'll put up what she's note taking, so we can all kind of see where we're at together. And so that, that is sort of the way that we thought of approaching this. And let me just name the areas that we thought we would delve into. And if it turns out we have additional time, we could discuss others or we'll just sort of, sort of temperature check right now. If this seems like the right topics to cover. But what I, what we had in the agenda was first to discuss finance. And then communications, which actually in my pre conversations with Paul and Jessica, we had wondered if it should be sort of recast a little bit more broadly as governance. Income encompassing communication and engagement with the town, the public and stakeholders, and the different sort of branches of your government, the council and management. Following that infrastructure, then a break, and then following the break, housing and economic development. So those were the sort of five items that felt like must be, must be covered today. And again, not that the other items are any less important, but that those are sort of continuing to march along in their current plan. And trusting that you will have other times to delve into them in a little bit more detail. So before I jump in, yeah, let me just see if there's any sort of responses to that approach. And then we can proceed. Chris, go ahead.
Thank you very much. It just occurred to me, will, will Cindy be taking minutes and will these minutes be available to the public? Being a meeting of a corps?
What happens is CBI transcribes the. The meeting minutes as, as they transcribe it into the strategic plan. This whole entire meeting is being taped and is going to be aired hopefully Sunday, but most definitely Monday for the public to view. It'll be on the town's website as well as our town council website. I've asked IT to put it on our website as well, as well as the general public's website. So the public will be able to see it's the meeting in its entirety.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to hear that.
Can I just one point, point of correction?
Sure.
I miss Karen Nobers in my team. She was here online too. So I hadn't thought about the minutes. But Karen Nobers was in that earlier session as well. She's our town attorney. Thank you.
Jen and then David.
I've looked over the topics and I feel it broad enough to be able to mention certain things that I have particular concerns about. So I'm happy with moving forward with you, with the plan as it is.
Thank you. David.
In recognition of Mark Els's earlier suggestion with regard to elevating communications to the same level as finance. I assume that we can discuss that under the category of governance.
Yes, certainly. Yeah. Paula.
Yes. And, and just a response to Chris. I believe that we will be getting the revised strategic plan as counselors to sort of bless. I think we do that offline. I don't think we come back to a full town council meeting and approve, but someone may remind me differently.
We do approve it as council.
As a town council.
On the agenda, approve the, the, or adopt the strategic plan. It's voted a council.
Right.
Any other process comments before we dive in here? Okay, great. Well, following on the excellent presentation by both Marks earlier this morning. On, let's, let's dive into the discussion of finance. And Maggie, could you put up the document that we have to sort of go into and I'll show you all. So this is one way of sort of visualizing a strategic plan. It doesn't have to be organized this way, but this will just be easy for us as we are note taking that you sort of name the goal at the top level. You talk about the sort of overarching strategies. And then as you sort of move to the right, you become increasingly more kind of specific. And then again, some indicators of ways to say, how will we measure our progress? How will we know if we're kind of getting where we want to be the next time that we revise this plan or any time along the way? So Mark Mill, I don't know if you want to sort of do any framing here or if we should just dive into discussion, but I wanted to just offer to you briefly.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm going to leave it to you.
Okay. Sorry to put you on the spot. I just felt like I should check. Okay. So let me just name, I'm just going to read this right out loud here. The goal that you all have named for finance is provide a viable financial plan for meeting the operational and capital needs of the town with a balanced budget that includes ongoing cost reductions, cost savings for residents, maintaining reserves, and aggressively pursuing new growth dollars and revenue sources. So just reflect on that for a second and feel if, see if that goal feels like it names what you're working towards. Welcome any comments here. And I think at this point, we're going to kind of edit what is here. And then again, we'll, we'll start to create new areas. And if I hear nothing, I'll assume this is perfect and needs no course correction. Paula, go ahead.
So I know this goal has been in existence for several years. And the idea of ongoing cost reductions, I think, is related to improving efficiencies in the way that we deliver services. So again, I, I look to my fellow counselors to. To remind me if, if that's what the whole purpose is of that ongoing cost reductions versus a real effort on trying to reduce programming and other things. I, I don't sense that's what we're trying to achieve, but it's more achieving efficiencies in, in our operations.
I saw Jessica waiting to speak and then others who want to address Paula's question as well, jump in, but Jessica, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna, you know, defer to the suggested edits on strategies. I'm not sure about goal. I, I think the goal, I think you're right. Paula, that that goal was prior to us doing E permitting. Trying to make that more efficient and cost reductions, maybe staffing to reduce the number of staff required to interact with the public. But I was going to talk about strategies, but the goal, I'm, I'm okay. I'm, I'm happy with the goal of finance as it stands now.
Jen, and then I think David.
Yeah, I think, you know, for me, the, it was never about reducing, reducing services to, to citizens, but more about value with regard to what we provide the citizens with. So I, I'm actually happy with the statement. I wouldn't have read it that way. I think it kind of covers everything. I don't know that we're always looking for cost savings. I'll say that. I mean, we, we have to lead you to the, the proposition two and a half. Thing that we're entitled to as a town every single year. I don't feel like we're, we're trying to. To necessarily curtail the cost of the citizens on, on, at every turn. But, but other than that, I'm happy with the, the goal.
Okay. David? You're muted, David.
That I took off. I apologize. I think I'm satisfied with the goal and I'm sure if this comes under strategies or not. I think the current circumstance that we've been in under the last six months has shown us that the world that we knew is not going to be the world going forward. So I didn't read it to encompass, say, reduction in services, rather ongoing cost reductions through technological services or things that may be available. Because it's clear that whether it's investment in personnel, buildings, et cetera, can be accomplished. And I think that, that the town staff and the manager are always looking at those. But the recent circumstance highlights that that is going to be something that we should be looking at more aggressively as we go forward. I think all businesses are.
Thank you. Eric, and then let's try to move into strategies following this if we can.
Yeah, just, I think obviously what we're here to do today is really broad goals. So a lot of the language needs to be broad. I think we have to be careful getting into specific language. Even the, the actions column is a little bit dicey there because you start kind of graying that area between the council enabling act and the managers enabling act. We're here to kind of set broad goals, but it's really up to the manager to, you know, see those, to achieve those goals as he sees fit. Based on the circumstances and that could be a variety of things, but we're not here to get into the nitty gritty of giving him direct actions on how to achieve these goals. So I think we need to be mindful of that. Going forward. And so I'm questioning why there's even an actions column. But I just want to remind my fellow counselors that this is a, this is a broad policy document we're putting together.
Yeah, thanks for that point, Eric. And let me just pose that to the group and to Mark Millman, Mark Els. Does it feel, I mean, I'm, I'm not envisioning a sort of, you know, detailed sort of implementation list of actions, but does it feel kind of too far out of your bailiwick to be discussing actions in detail? Would it be more comfortable to sort of talk about desired outcomes and strategies? And, and leave the actions to your very able management team? Yes.
If, if I could, Elizabeth and to the counselors. I, I think it's more to the, to the work of the council to help create a culture or an atmosphere of who we are as, as a town. The manager will, will put those actions into, into play. But if we become a community that's known for, yes, come on in technology, yes, come on in. Energy resources that maybe someday we're an exporter of energy. I think we're moving in that direction. That, that starts here, right here in, in the town of Barnstable. So I think our job is more to open up the gates of ideas and a culture of receptiveness to all kinds of activities from the public, from the private, from businesses. And then again, it will be the town management and, and staff that will, will facilitate that in action. Thank you.
So. Mark, go ahead.
Well, I, I, I think that Eric's point is spot on. I think that actions are tactics and that's not what we're here to do. I think that to truly do this properly, and I have no problem with working with the council collectively or, you know, individually in talking about how we move from a goal of a strategy through into a viable tactic. You know, without that, we're not going to achieve, you know, we're, we're all in this together. So. But I think that sticking with the general strategies and are they reflective of what the council would like to see the outcomes be for us is important. So maybe rather than actions, we're looking at outcomes. And I'm very interested in whether the council feels as though they, they have some, the indicator is the fine word, I guess. But are you satisfied that you know when we're meeting those broad goals through those strategies? And if you are, great. But if you aren't, how can we better do it through our budget, through our communications, et cetera? Thank you.
Go ahead, Paul and Paula.
Thank you. I think I would just like to touch base when my thoughts in regards to finance and, and running the town. I, I think the word that comes to mind that's most important. The town manager touched on it and that's balance. I think that when we're dealing with finance, when we're trying to determine what things will need to be paid for. In, in the end, we're not. We have to, we have to guard against running the town as a for-profit business. And what I mean by that is certainly. Balances and accounts are great. Certainly, we've got some daunting capital improvement. Items that need to be addressed going forward. But I, I think the original intent of proposition two and a half, at least as I understood it, was to cap the increases in taxes year over year. My dream, and it probably is a dream at this point, would, would be to have to not engage in a, in a property two and, two and a half percent increase on, on, you know, our taxing authority at some point in the future. Because we've been able to develop an economic model that provides for the services. And obviously the increasing costs of benefits that, that continue year after year. With that said, you know, we, we, with the summing and wastewater. You know, there's been some talk about, about overriding, or at least these are just, these are conversations that we need to have. But again, we look at our reserves continuing to increase, which is a great thing. We look at our enterprise accounts, obviously reserves are needed in, in times like this that, that come upon us over, over the years that are not predictable. So reserves are very important, but it gets to the point where. I think in our vision that we need to always keep in mind that the, the, the. The majority of our revenues are generated by property tax and by ownership of property in town. And we always need to keep in mind the members and, and property owners in town that are limited in terms of their ability to afford living here. Fixed incomes and the such. We look at our increase in property values, which certainly. Is, is good for the town, but not only do we have increases in property taxes, but when we have two and a half percent increases year over year, 10 years is 25%, 20 years is 50% increases in property tax, plus the accelerated values of our, of our collective homes and properties. I, I guess the point that I'm making is that when we look at the finance picture and, and. I know Director Mill, I think, you know, views these reserves as, as he should, as, as an extremely important part of navigating the town through uncertain times. But we always have to keep in mind when it comes to finance that in the end, the majority of our taxes are driven by property taxes and we need to protect against. Growing these reserves or maybe. I don't want to say creating frivolous expenses. When times are good, you tend to spend more, right? It's just human nature. So. The management needs to always have an eye on what is best for the people of the town in terms of a tax burden. And again, that's just, for me, that's just a, a, a part of, of what I consider finance in, in the big picture of things to. You know, to provide the services at the best levels that we can. Yet not to, lack of a better word, drive fees, costs to our end users in order that we're generating. A profit, a profit situation. I don't know if I'm clear in what I'm trying to relate. To the council and to the staff, but to me, that's the number one thing that when I, when I think about finance in the town in terms of how we need to approach things in an equitable fashion. And, you know, to, to, to keep the cost of living in this, this great town affordable for the masses. That two cents.
Thank you. I know that Paula was waiting and I see Deborah. Before we jump in a little bit deeper, though, I do just want to kind of make sure we're, we're all on the same page about how to approach this. And I've heard some thought that let's focus more at the strategic level. And I'm sort of intuiting that, that a lot of the discussion is going to be in this sort of first column. So let me just make a sort of proposed friendly amendment to our plan and, and see what you all think. And then we can dive back in, but then we can know our process for all the remaining sections. I wonder if we, if we keep editing the strategies, which are currently populated there and we sort of revise them as we need to, we could have an area to discuss sort of desired outcomes. To Mark Els's point, if there's more that you all feel you could articulate about sort of the, the outcomes you are trying to reach, we, you can name those there. And then we could keep a column that is just for sort of, for notes and ideas that may or may not make it into the strategic plan, but we can provide those to you. Because some of this might be ideas that we don't want to lose in our discussion today, but don't necessarily belong at the level of strategic plan. So that is one sort of way to thread this needle that I wanted to run by you all. Or would you prefer to keep at the approach that we had named previously?
We are going to be having a fiscal policy workshop, which has already been mentioned. So when we're getting into some of these, you know, more detailed policy questions, that would be more the appropriate time to get into some of these issues.
The more detailed issues. Okay, yeah.
I agree with Eric.
Okay. Does anybody disagree with what Eric has put forward with the sort of revised approach that I have named?
Can I ask a question, Elizabeth? Do you, do you want to rename the categories? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, maybe we.
Do you do that online?
Call that strategies. We call it, oh, there we go, Maggie's done it.
Okay, good.
How does that look to everybody?
I can't read it.
What's it, desired out?
You make it a different color?
Yeah, sorry, we're in track changes here. But it says desired outcomes and notes and ideas.
There you go.
Okay.
I would agree with that approach. I think one of the tensions we've had and, well, at least the one strategic planning effort I did, was participating in was how do we evaluate whether we are making any progress per our strategic plan? And I think having at least some type of outcome, it could be fairly broad, would guide us in knowing our, you know, if we're making progress in the plan that we're putting out. And something as simple as knowing that we're going to have a fiscal policy could be discussion, you know, that could be the outcome. So it, it doesn't have to be anything hugely burdensome.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Gordon, go ahead.
It says we want to create new growth, new growth dollars. Is, is our budget, this is a background question. Is our budget based on the fact that we need new growth dollars every year? Is it, is it premised on that?
Yep.
Mark Els, would you respond?
For us to maintain the current level of service, we need two and a half plus a million in growth. And we, we can zip out a, you know, over a 10-year period. I know Mark Millen had it at other presentations, how much in any given year over, over time we see in growth. And on average, it's about a million dollars. Some years it's a little more, some years it's less. But to your point, if, if we do not support level service, we would, whether it be decreased service or increased service, we would have to modify that equation. Because from a quantified standpoint, that's how we're running. Two and a half plus a million. If we don't have that, if we're less, we got to cut or use reserve. If it's more, then we can divert that money from ops into capital.
So that, that's because the, the costs are rising more than 2% a year?
Yes, sir.
Yep, okay.
And regulation, et cetera, et cetera. Not just inflation.
Does some of that, some of the, the $1 million come from increased valuation? Or is it all new buildings?
No, it's new growth.
So it's something like the new Walmart?
It is, yeah, new growth, whatever it might be, whatever the, whatever this respective source might be. I don't know, maybe Mark might have a better historical perspective on that.
So what are we, what, what, what are we doing to create new growth?
Upgrading buildings.
If that's a strategy, has it worked? Are we, are we?
Yes, we are meeting, we are meeting that objective on average annually so that we do not have a budget that doesn't, our budget is focused on level service.
Okay, so, so if we talk about putting in sewers up in the industrial park.
That's a whole nother, that's, that's new group, that's new, that's new capital and that's new operation and maintenance. So we have to identify what our, what our fiscal policy is relevant to how we would fund that. And then, you know, and then proceed with that. Now, that's part of the discussion we need to have. We need to talk with council about, okay, we're going to add these. It's no different than the private roads issue I brought up early. We accepted private roads that were the private property owner's responsibility. But with that came no capital money to upgrade and no operating money to maintain.
That means?
That, that basically means now you're deficient. That you're short now and you're going to have to take it from somewhere else. And, and our approach, and Director Millen has positioned us quite well in his, in his decades of financial leadership. We're able to quantify that. We know exactly the impacts financially. And then we need to decide, the more difficult part is looking at programs and services when we don't receive the resources we need and saying, okay, this is what we can't do anymore. And most of what we do at this point is need.
So that, that is helpful framing. And Gordon, I hope that answers some of your question. I think we're kind of settling in here and we're going to have to do a little bit of sort of treading the line, figuring out what is part of the strategic discussion today versus what goes into that more detailed fiscal policy workshop that you all are planning for later this fall. I've noted that Deborah is waiting to speak and then Jessica. So let me go to them and then others who want to. Feel free to raise your hand and I'll note you. Deborah, go ahead.
Yeah, some things have already been kind of covered what I wanted to say. But when you asked at the beginning which direction we wanted to go in terms of each of these categories, and I feel we should look at, you know, priorities. When we look at all of these, the different ideas that we have for finance, I think right now with the COVID situation, people being in such a, in such dire straits, some of, some of our residents, that we should be looking at, maybe looking more towards revenue, new revenue sources. I know there are some that are coming directly because of the COVID, but cost savings to our residents. And I think we, you know, we've done a great job with maintaining the reserves. But I, I think these categories underneath finance may be prior, bringing some more priority to what it is that we think at this time that needs to be focused upon. Was my, my comment.
Thank you. So do you think that there needs to be more at the strategic level naming sort of ways to provide relief or to sort of address the hardships of this time? Is that sort of what you're saying, Deborah, or something else?
Well, the times are changing. I mean, this is, we're not going to be in this situation forever. We know in 2008, there was a recession and things were really, really kind of dire at that time. And I think we, but we, you know, we've, we've come out of that. And so, you know, things are going to change over time. But I'd like for us to really keep, you know, a focus on, which I think we've done a great job. I'm very happy with the fact that we're maintaining reserves to offset those kinds of things. I sometimes think that we, and, and not that I have anything against recreational kinds of activities, but I think sometimes we, at times could put a little more funds in those areas that may not be a top priority throughout the budgeting process. And that we should maybe really look at, you know, what are our real priorities? Where does the money need to go? What, what does our citizens really need? And I think generating revenue resources and ways of maintaining the reserves so that we can offset the, add to the cost savings for, for residents. So I, I don't know if I'm making sense, but just prioritizing things, I think, a little more. What I'd like to hear us talk a little bit about.
Well, maybe we can at least, maybe we can at least note so far and sort of determine where to put it. But something about the need to kind of have, have hard sort of priority setting.
Each of these.
Yeah. Okay, Jessica.
Well, I'm getting back to the mention of revenue sharing municipal and school budget. I don't know if it should be a strategy that on more than, you know, just on the management level, and maybe it stays at the management level with the superintendent, but looking at the cost sharing between the schools and the, and the municipal side. Is that a strategy? If we're getting into the strategies. And with regard to Mark's suggested edits to allocate appropriate resources to perform the operational audits as needed. Mark, where, in, in what regard did you put that in there? So that, to make sure that the, you know, the, the, all divisions are performing to the strategy or, or strategic plan? Or why has that been put in there?
I, I, my suggestion was focused, it's twofold. One kind of practical and the other more theoretical. The practical is it costs money to do audits. So for us to assume that they can be done effectively and, you know, in, in a, in a manner that is objective, many times you have to bring in outside expertise with a, a, a broader knowledge, quite honestly. And so, but you could do internal audits, but it's a different product than an external. Secondly, I think it's healthy to evaluate how we do business. And audits help us to go through an operational audit. It helps us to go, I'm not talking about the financial audits that Mark Millen has to do every year. I'm talking about operational audits of our police, of our, I mean, Jen Cullum actually suggested it relevant to remote learning, you know, earlier on. And I, I think that we don't want to do that as a reactive sort of approach. We want to do that because it, it adds value and it allows us to look at, for example, contract ops for grounds maintenance, let's say. Every three to five years, we, we should be considering whether we want to do that in public work, schools, golf courses, et cetera, and run an audit and see. And, and, you know, there, there's big picture sort of privatization questions that I can answer relevant to, to, to level of service and cost. But also from that process, we get suggested changes from, from an independent group that can really help us better do what we're trying to do. I don't look at it as a, I think it's important to have that opportunity. I try to hold within the manager's budget a small amount of money to probably do like one a year. But I think it's a healthy process. And I think it'll help us to report out on those outcomes and are we achieving things? And if not, you know, you know, again, we are, we are, I described certainly statewide and broader, a, a competitive community. And meaning we're trying to compete and, and provide a high quality of life. And to do that, this is another tool that will help us achieve it.
Thank you for that. Sorry, go ahead, Jessica.
Yeah, I would suggest that perhaps we incorporate that as a strategy under financial.
Yep, so operational audits in order to, I think, get at this point that's been brought up about sort of continuing to make sure that priorities are reflected in where spending is.
Important to include the financial statement as well.
Okay.
Because otherwise you, you don't have to. But what that says to me is if it costs $25,000 a year and we don't have the corresponding increase in funding, then I am cutting somewhere else. And I would, if I were you, I would say, okay, Mark, yep, that's what I want. But what are you going to cut?
So all, this is, this is, this is very helpful. And I just want to sort of, I think we're starting to do it now, but let's try to focus our comments on potential edits here. I see that Jen is waiting to speak. And I just want to sort of preview for you that this is going to feel rushed and messy. We're going to note down everything here. It's going to be a little bit messy. We're going to tighten it up afterwards and send it back to you for review. But like in 15 minutes or so, I'm going to move us on to talking about communications and governance. So just, just giving you ample warning with that. Jen, and then Paula.
Messy is where I live, so no worries about that. The, so what Mark was saying and also what Jessica was saying, in particular for me, under this governance thing, I have a major concern about the school budget. And I know that we can't drill down into issues of curriculum and other things. But if we go back to our goal in finance of delivering what is the most valuable product to the, the residents of Barnstable, and we remember that the school is a department under us, then I think that we have a responsibility to deliver a better product to, to our, our townspeople and to our kids. And with that, I guess, you know, the independent review is absolutely essential as far as I'm concerned when we have a superintendent that's, I think, top five for salary. But depending upon what school you look, what school rating system you look at, we're, we're like 40, 41 in the state. We kind of need to pull that back into the framework under which the town works of excellence, which is, you know, we've got Mark Millen, we've got Mark Els, we've got Dan Santos. You know, we need the schools to be up there, supporting their part of this big tent that we have. So, you know, for me, the independent review thing is absolutely essential. And as far as any sort of a deliverable from it, I think, you know, when we, we talk about communication, it kind of dovetails into, into governance in a lot of ways because we need, we need more credibility in the eyes, I believe, of the taxpayer in general. And that'll, I'll speak to that at the next, the next topic. But I think one way to do that is to hire independent organizations to come in and, and evaluate and, and, and figure out where we are and where we could be, especially given the salaries that we're paying and the position that we are in ranking. So for me, it would be, you know, definitely be evaluated by out, outside agencies and then have those evaluations available to us to make policy decisions.
Under, could that go sort of under this new bullet, under strategies about operational audits, adding something about the need for independent review and sort of using that as in, in, in policy and sort of budgetary decision making?
I don't want to get down into what the manager's job should be necessarily, but I guess my, I guess ultimately my 30,000-foot thing, since we're doing that, would be to develop a strategy whereby we are evaluating our educational, we're evaluating everything. Let's not, let's not just drill the educational part of it. But I think that one of my really big concerns is that, to be honest.
Noted, and this will be shared with the council and with Mark. Paula.
Yes. In, in looking at possible cost savings for residents, also looking at the equity question of resource allocation, I'm just going to throw out the notion that we're, we're sort of in a time in which throwing radical ideas on the table is probably not a bad idea. And looking at the continued independent fire and water districts as a place where we might find cost savings and efficiencies going forward. I, I, I don't know if anybody else on the council has any appetite to put that in as a strategy for exploration, but I wanted to throw it out there. I know as we've reviewed many of the requests for our Hyannis Water District, you know, for infrastructure improvement, you know, a lot of the cost falls on the rate payers. But there have been discussions, you know, to spread that out across the town. I imagine that's going to continue to be a need in, in Hyannis. And truthfully, there is an imbalance between, you know, across the entire town on what we pay for those, those services. I look at the number of dispatch, you know, I, I mean, it I look at the number of dispatch, you know, I, I mean, it kind of boggles my mind. I mean, we've, we've had some efficiencies created by having the BPD and the Hyannis Fire share dispatch service. But again, that may be another opportunity to look at. So again, don't know if there's any appetite, but I just wanted to throw it out there. As we're looking forward to major infrastructure needs. You know, again, when we move on to economic development, I have heard that, that, that is sometimes a barrier for economic development in Hyannis is some of the water hookups. So just wanted to throw it out there.
Any other comments on these strategies, anything that need, Jessica?
Well, I just want to respond to Councilor Schnepp and I don't think it's any, well, I think it's public knowledge that I have been a proponent of consolidation of the fire and water districts for many years. And I, I don't believe that it's the council, it should be a council strategy to look to pursue the consolidation of our fire and water districts. I think that has to come from within those districts. And I will guarantee you that when my term as town councillor ends, that's going to be one of the things that I pursue is consolidating the fire and water districts.
You know, I think that Anne Kennedy and I had this conversation about how all retired councillors should, should work on that issue. Because you end up having the knowledge about how town government works and you see the possibility for such great savings when a quarter of your taxes in Hyannis are your fire district tax. And then you have the, you know, the, all the problems with the well, with the water here and, and everything else. So, you know, I think it's a Herculean effort, but one that really has to be the groundswell of public opinion led by people who've had a history in public service, so.
And realize too, that those fire districts are not held to Proposition Two and a half.
Exactly.
Which could be changed, but now we're getting off topic.
You're getting into state enabling acts now.
So all, any?
Just a quick response. I mean, the, the only caveat I would say is that because the Hyannis Water District is within the, you know, the town, then we have sort of a foot in the door to start that conversation. So again, maybe it, it's not going to be included as a strategy. But again, I think it's something that we need to have that conversation somewhere.
Matthew.
Thank you. The, obviously appreciate everybody's comments. I, I definitely think that there's a lot of cost saving mentions that I would support. Obviously that I, I mirror what councillor Rappaport said, he said about this conversation really unfortunately can't start with us, you know. There's been many times people have come to public comment and have said, well, this tax or this thing, but it's really unfortunately has anything to do with us. We have no control over it. And usually that's stated quite quickly. The, and even fire commissioners from time to time get confused with that. Anyway, that being said, I think a lot of, obviously talk about growth dollars and the way businesses are being run. I think what we're going to see more and more is not a lot of brick and mortar type growth. But my hope is a lot, as, you know, these businesses, this real estate is unfortunately evacuated. It's going to be more opportunity, I think, for, and again, this goes to town manager Els's comment about SWOT analysis. Though this is a threat, it's also an opportunity, I think, for some more housing and housing development opportunities and obviously, you know, improvement of property and therefore higher tax revenue. So I, I just want to just stress the importance that we need to really focus on these growth opportunities. I think what councillor Star was referring to when he said Walmart was the Walgreens that was just approved over at the, at the Rotary, that's a perfect example of, of growth dollars and improvement of an eyesore on top of that. So the gateway to Hyannis is going to look a little bit better because of that property being there. And it's going to put pressure on the surrounding properties to kind of fall in suit, fall in line, which again increases their property value, which again increases our revenue. So it's definitely a domino effect as we move forward on this and improve blighted property. But again, now with a movement towards maybe less brick and mortar, we also need to support the home businesses that are going to be more prevalent moving forward and people working from home. And a lot of problems that I'm hearing here, even from constituents in Marston's Mills, is that people are trying to open home businesses and then when they get to the town, they're asking for a business permit so they can register their business in town. And they need this permit sometimes to open a bank account, to, you know, open an LLC. They're trying to do everything the right way. But then when they're told, well, this is a residential zone, you can't open a business without getting approval from the ZBA. Now you have to pay that fee. You got to pay mitigating costs. Again, it's cost prohibitive to open a business and do things the right way sometimes because people are just trying to do the right thing. And again, I get it, we have zoning ordinancees, things in place to stop traffic coming into neighborhoods and things of that nature. But now with all of these online businesses where people are just basically, you know, if anything, it's going to the post office or it's a UPS pickup or something like that. It's not customers coming in and out. It's all shipped through Amazon, different platforms might have you. And so I think there's more that needs to be done to try to improve that because those are growth dollars that will be lost if not people are not given the opportunity to do the right thing. Thank you.
So I think what I'm sort of hearing there is just the need to have awareness of finance and revenue growth strategies going forward, given what, you know, a, a sort of trending, changing economy that might have some inflection from this current moment we find ourselves in.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mark Millen, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Just a couple of points about new property growth. New growth is generally the result of new building growth. Previously, it also included things like large tracts of undeveloped land that eventually get subdivided and become developable. We don't see that in our town anymore. We're not there. So really, a lot of our new growth is being derived from the redevelopment of underperforming parcels. And that's, our strategy has been that for the past several years. And I think it's important that we follow a strategy like that to target underperforming properties and redevelop them. Because that's where we can really get a lot of our new growth property tax dollars going forward. And another comment is just on the second to last bullet here under strategies. It talks about support and promote an open budget. I would suggest that we change that instead of saying the open budget to more financial transparency. Over the past few years, we have increased our efforts and we plan to continue to do so to provide the public more transparency over the town's financial condition, so forth. And so those are the, I get, I think that describes better what we've been doing.
Great. Paula and then Tracy.
Yes, and I also wanted to bring over the last bullet that was in Mark Els's presentation under financial priorities was supporting and promoting the contactless financial transactions and the transition to digital information. You know, to me, that, that's a very quantifiable, I mean, we can really see, you know, how we have moved forward with that. And my hope, and I, I think we're kind of going in that direction, is there's a fairly uniform way that residents can do these contactless financial transactions. I think, you know, there's been a real, you know, urgency to try to put a lot of this online. And in doing so, I think there's kind of a variety of ways that people can make these payments. So to the extent that that's standardized, at the same time, that would be great.
Okay, thank you. Go to Tracy and we may have time for one more comment and then I'm going to move us on.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I wanted to touch on a couple of things that were said. Mark had mentioned earlier that, you know, Barnstable is truly the economic center of the entire county. But even beyond that, Hyannis is the economic center of the entire county. And as we also mentioned, the two largest employers, the town of Barnstable and Cape Cod Healthcare are located. But sort of piggybacking onto that, equitable balance of resource allocation. And I just want to advocate more for Hyannis that in terms of that equitable balance of resource allocation, it seems to me, you know, similarly to how the school budget and the budget for the rest of the town is sort of a 60, 40 split, that an equitable balance in resource allocation, you know, the allocation towards the village of Hyannis versus the other six villages, again, I think needs to take into account the fact that Hyannis is the economic center and, you know, the big city on Cape Cod. So I, I think that needs to be more focused on. And it also probably more than likely be the seat of most new commercial economic growth. Also bringing into that, you know, is one thing would be looking into pilot programs, payments in lieu of taxes and potentially opening that door to negotiating with some of the large nonprofits that are cited in Hyannis. And consideration of the fact that unlike Palm or the West Barnstable Fire Department, Hyannis Fire is proportionately much more busy than the other fire departments of the town. However, as a Hyannis taxpayer, you know, we bore the brunt of that new station. And I, I think this all goes back to that equity question. So I would like to advocate more for the citizens of Hyannis on that front and just really looking at, you know, whether we need to explore pilot programs to bring in more revenue in Hyannis, whether we need to look at how the capital budget and infrastructure improvements and that sort of thing. How are those resources allocated between the villages? And is that equitable towards the village of Hyannis? But I also wanted to bring up exploration of different economies. So whether this is blue economy, green economy. I think one thing we don't talk about on Cape Cod that we should is the incredible resource we have of our gray economy, so to speak. Our senior population who I think, you know, we've got some incredible people that have retired to the Cape and some brilliant minds, but how do we tap into the gray economy? The final comment I wanted to make with regard to sort of economic development. For me, if there was one thing that was crystal clear to me during COVID, is it was the smaller local businesses who really stepped up to meet the needs of the community. Those were the businesses that were more agile, that were able to change operations. And I think what we also saw was that for a lot of the national chains, one quarter of unprofitability and they shut down the whole chain nationwide. And I think we should seriously think about investing more and providing more incentives to small local businesses. Whether that's prioritizing housing for them, whether that's prioritizing, you know, grant money and that kind of thing. But I really think we should take into consideration supporting our locals, new opportunities for small local businesses. As Matt brought up, you know, a lot of people are working from home now. How can we as a town support our local cottage industries and make this a place that is super desirable for small local business owners? That's all.
Thank you. And I think we've captured, we've, we're doing our best to capture that in the notes and we'll sort of have to see what translates over. Okay, with that, it's going to be hard, but I'm going to move us on to communications and governance now. And, and we will return to this and sort of tighten it up and provide some proposals back to you. Maggie, can we move on to the page with communications and governance? So as I, as I mentioned before, when I had been discussing this with Paul and Jessica leading up to this meeting, there was a thought that sort of along the lines of what Mark Els said at the beginning, that communications maybe needs to be sort of construed more broadly and made sort of an overarching category. One thought that we had was, does this, is what you're trying to get at there kind of governance broadly beyond just channels of communication? I, I leave that to you, whether that is like a meaningful name change or not, or substantive name change. But let us dive into this in the same way that we have the previous one. Look at the goal statement, look at the strategies, and then let's name if there needs to be additional changes or additions or changes to the strategies, other notes and ideas. Jen, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the goal is, is, is what it should be. I just don't think that we've really hit the mark in the last two years since the goal was put in, I remember, I think it was two years ago. And I agree that finance and communication should be at the same level. Because one thing that I think we've all seen over the last, you know, four years at least, if not six years in national politics is a complete breakdown of, of the truth of what's, of what efforts are being made on the part of people, of all of those efforts being twisted and kind of rehashed and disseminated in a different way. And I don't think we have the purity of disseminating, communicating exactly what's happening and having it being perceived that way. I think there's a major credibility issue. And I don't necessarily think it's, it's earned. I think that, you know, my, from my involvement with the town in the 10 years that I've been here now, I can say it's been an incredibly professional organization almost the entire time, especially on the part of staff. Maybe there's been a few blips with councillors here and there, but on the part of staff, it's been an incredibly run, professionally run organization. And I just think we fail miserably at communicating that. And I guess one of the things that I think really scares me is the lack of citizen involvement in things. And I, I would ask that we consider having a strategy, asking staff to develop a strategy to create more civic engagement. And, you know, this is kind of a silly, a silly comparison, but when you think about, you know, the high school volleyball team, Tom Turk was out there like scouting kids when they're eight years old, which sounds creepy, but I don't mean it to sound creepy. But like, you know, he's out there like scouting for, for volleyball players. Are we scouting for anybody? I mean, I don't know that we are. And I, I really feel like until we have that kind of civic minded aspect, whether we ask the school committee to consider a curriculum on that or we alone take it to another level, I don't really know how we would do that. We don't, we don't have buy-in from everyone or even some or even a third. I mean, it's, I, I just don't know how we get more of an active citizen body involved in what we do on the day to day. And I know it's exhausting. I mean, and especially, here's another reason, we don't have a, a really active local paper anymore. Barnstable Patriots gone the way of the dodo. The people who run it aren't from here. And, and so the information isn't really being generated or disseminated about how hard the town works. And I do appreciate the, the formulation of the communications position. I think that's a good step forward. But really, I would look to getting our information into every kid's binder when we get back to school. What's happening at the town council, a sheet. Because although I've said it many times, although I go through junk mail and I toss everything out, I look at everything that comes home in my kid's binder. I just think we need to get our hooks into the average Joe more. We need a bilingual approach, so we're, we're encouraging all citizens. If you look at our civic associations, they represent a very small amount of the 3,000, 3,500 people that are in every one of our precincts. And that's a shame and that voice gets lost. And we've seen it with the STR thing, that gets lost. I mean, even the Civicus, the Hyannis Civic Association had sent out a message to all, all of its membership that was factually incorrect. The Hyannis Civic Association, and I had to correct it and it was embraced and thank you for that. But, you know, that, that shouldn't be what we're doing. We shouldn't be having to, you know, correct untruths. We should have a direct communication. Our efforts should be understood as honest efforts because we're members of the community too. And so I worry about this a lot with governance. I also worry about the discrepancy between the qualifications of staff and the qualifications needed to become a councillor. Because really, you can just be voted in with zero, with absolutely zero background, zero boards. And I was one of those people. So I know that a couple of councillors, I think it's councillor Shaughnessy and councillor Clark have been working on a guidebook or maybe they can speak to it. I hope I'm not calling him out. But where where, where there's a general framework for what your job is and how to get there. Because you, you hit this job running, and you know, it's only after eight years, maybe, maybe six years after I'd been in it, where I actually started to get my legs and felt comfortable with what I was doing.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a lot of, a lot of these discrepancies that really concern me, especially now in a cancel culture, knee jerk reaction, sort of a climate that we're in, where we really need to gain credibility in the eyes of the voter. Not just us, the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, Deborah, and then Jessica. And I encourage you all to look, look at these strategies and, and let us know if more needs to be here specifically. Go ahead, Deborah.
Yes, you know, we, we, we just look at the nation. We have a divided society right now. And I think the more encompassing in the country has changed with the values that we all, um, we more unify, and they're not as unified now. And so I think that we have to think outside the box. I think the town has done a great job in trying to institute some new communication strategies. You know, we talked about, you know, trying to go digital and, and I, um, and even our newspapers now are, you know, you don't go and just buy a newspaper at a local spot, you know, people do it online. And so I, I'm, and what I see with a lot of the civic associations, I see it in the churches as well, there is a generation gap there, and that may have something to do with communication as well because we have a generation, and our churches aren't, and at some of many, many of our committees, there's a, um, when I say a generation gap, there's a group, a section of the generation that we're not reaching. Through technology, that's, that's not, doesn't seem to be working as well. Our churches are filled with older, uh, older generations. If you look at our civic associations, it's similar. And so how do we reach that next generation of folks that a lot of these things we're talking about are going to affect them? And so I'm wondering if we need to do something more visual, because everybody doesn't learn the same way as an educator, you know, you have different teaching styles, different learning styles. And to find a different, um, and it, it does require thinking outside the box, you know. When we want to get people to slow down on some of these streets that they're speeding up on, we have some, you know, fluorescent lights that just kind of flash and say, you know, you're going fast. And I'm just wondering if we can look at something similar that really gets people's attention. Because, you know, in a different way, that's not all, not, that's outside of what we're doing right now. Because what we're doing right now is good, but it's something that's missing. And so we really need to think about trying to connect that. Communication.
Yeah, thank you, Deborah. And I'm hearing from you, and I think this might filter into some of these strategies, need to sort of think about targeted communication strategies to reach different populations in the town. This goes back to what Jen was saying also about sort of reaching a broader subset of the populace and using different, different sort of mediums to get there. So thanks for that. Jessica, go ahead.
You know, due to COVID, I think the engagement of our community has been increased. I think it's evident by the Asset Management Advisory Committee meeting that held. Never would there have been thirty people driving to town hall to participate in a meeting. So I think maybe one of our strategies to be in, um, promoting and accepting the, um, remote participation on all of our boards, committees, and commissions going forward, because this is the new reality. You know, and from a person has to drive the furthest to town hall on this council, I appreciate the fact that I don't have to do that several times a week anymore. And, and God forbid, I would have had to drive home at one in the morning last Thursday. So I think that could, that fostering that kind of particip- participation, it would garner more participation from people that don't necessarily spend all of their winters here. They could do it, they could zoom in from Florida. Right now, that's not, um, accepted by the town of Barnstable. So I think we should look into adopting that, that law that allows for remote particip- participation on all our boards, committee, commissions. And lastly, I think the town manager updates, video updates have been very effective. I, I don't know how many views they receive, but as Deborah said, some people don't learn or really care to read documents, but to listen to a video and hear, uh, you know, some, some information updates, I think is very effective.
Great. David, go ahead.
Maybe then that needs to be on the school website too, the link to the town manager's communications. Because I know parents are really actively involved in, in the school. We, we're missing a huge chunk of young parents or even older parents, you know, me. I, you know, if I weren't a town counselor, would I be paying attention? Would I be on the town website? Would I be watching Channel eighteen? Like, how do we capture that audience? It's, those are great suggestions, Jessica.
Thank you, Jen. David, and then Mark L is waiting. David, you're muted, sorry. The phrase of twenty twenty, you're muted.
Yeah. In terms of civic communication and engagement, I think we need to look at ourselves first. Uh, people need to understand and believe they are being heard. It doesn't do any good when people come to our town council meetings, express legitimate concerns, and there's no response. And that, I think that ameliorates their desire to get involved. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to have the communication going towards them as well.
Right, ensuring that the responsiveness is there to sort of merit the, the engagement that you're asking for. Good point. Mark, go ahead.
I think three things, but first I did offer a bullet during my presentation relevant to communication, if the council's interested in considering it. Secondly, to Jessica's point, um, I'd be very interested in hearing collectively from the council because I do believe the authority to go remote for the community is something that the town manager would need to do. We are contemplating that, as you know. We, uh, we as an organization have changed and will continue to change and adapt. And I absolutely see this as part of, um, the way that we communicate and the way that we conduct ourselves at public meetings. So I'm very receptive to this, but I would absolutely want to hear from the council. And, and I don't know what the best way to do that is. And, uh, geez, I had a third item, and at this point I forget what it is. So I think I'm going to, I'll bring it back up. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Mark, could you just name for us what was the suggested strategy that you, just for those who can't see both at the same time?
Oh, I gotta grab it. I'll have to grab it and come.
I think it was, was it to develop tactics to effectively solicit public input and promote active engagement?
Yes. And I remembered, so my other item. And it is that at the end of those community updates that I provide, and I have received all positive feedback from that. Uh, if you go to Sandy Neck, you should watch the one this way. But at the tail end of that, I'm attaching the, the superintendent's update. And a lot of people don't look to the school site. That's part of the challenge we have, is that they do look to Channel eighteen and they do look to our website to a certain degree. Our youth doesn't, I'll tell you that. But, and that might be an important factor to think about how better to communicate and engage, for example, our, uh, youth commission in asking them, how do we get, how do we package this communication? And how do we get it to the youth so that they feel more engaged? But I can tell you that the superintendent's updates are the second half of my community updates. And that was a result of exactly what Jen brought up, in that we need to do this more and we need to do it better.
Chris, go ahead. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much. And hearing some of the comments, I appreciate, um, these, um, good, big ideas. This is a little more specific, but it just occurred to me, and I thought I'd throw it out there, and it straddles both finance and, um, and communications. But, um, I found it very helpful when I was employed by the town to, um, develop a volunteer workforce for the shellfish program. And I found that that was a, another sideways to not only get folks engaged who may become part, who may be willing to join the shellfish committee, but also in communicating where the latest best places to go shellfishing. Uh, the other thing is, so that, in that, I was wondering if it'd be helpful to develop a position for volunteer coordinator, as well as an idea for perhaps a grants coordinator, which I know at one time we had. But, um, earlier this year, I found a grant, um, opportunity through AARP. It's not one of the, um, major governmental grant programs, but I brought that to the town staff. And I've found that, that I think we are, uh, missing some money on the table, as Counselor Shaughnessy has referred to before, by not, um, mining more aggressively, um, nonprofit and private sources for money to augment the, um, town, town's budget. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. And I'll note that, we'll note that and maybe think if that goes into finance or economic development, that point about grants, but the volunteer coordinator is another way of sort of making sure that there's those sort of fingers out into the community. So thanks for that suggestion. Other, um, ideas, we have about seven minutes. Paula, go ahead.
I think that we actually have a lot of great strategies, um, and we have a lot of great assets in the town. I think of our Citizens Leadership Academy, uh, our Channel eighteen. I mean, we really do have a robust system in place. What I feel the attention needs to be in is ensuring that some of these strategies are fully built out. And I know that we've made this conversion to a newer version of a website, but I, I feel like there still needs to be some attention to how that website could be more user friendly, um, especially in accessing information. There, it's, you know, how to get your dump sticker on, you know, your transfer station sticker online. I mean, we have so much information to provide, it is sometimes very difficult to know how to prioritize what gets on that homepage versus, you know, some education on how to find things. So I, I think some refinement of our website is, is possible. I also think that we should make sure, to the extent possible, that any applications that come into town for funding or review, if possible, if, if they're, if, if they're provided digitally, then they should be available to the public for their review. And whether that's a housing project, um, a request, you know, so something that is going to be in the public purview anyway, I think we can enhance the transparency of what we're doing by making sure it's available to people as, as easily as possible. Again, I, I think these are embedded within our existing strategies, but I would just like to see a more, sometimes a more robust response as we move forward. Again, um, with, with the, um, advent of all our Zoom meetings, we do have the ability to record them and put them up on the website. I don't believe we have a hundred percent of that. I mean, it, I think just historically, certain committees have been recorded, and those are the ones that are currently available online. But I think that if we record a meeting, there should be a place on our website for the public to access it. So.
Thanks for that, Paula. Uh, Deborah.
Yes, I just want to touch on a couple of things that some counselors have already spoken about. The fact that, uh, one of our counselors spoke, uh, Vice President spoke about the fact that the COVID has kind of brought more people out as a, you know, somewhat of a, uh, strategy, the fact that we're doing things kind of virtually in Zoom meetings and whatnot. And the fact that, uh, we, another counselor, I think, Counselor Cullen spoke, the fact that we're not reaching, um, some of the young families. People are very, very busy and they're just not focusing or being as engaged as, uh, perhaps they should be. But I, I just want to throw out the fact that not only do we have a generation gap, we also have an economic gap as well. And there are a lot of people, I hear, you know, us talking about getting online and doing these sort of things, but there are a lot of people who are trying to put food on the table and keep a roof over their head and interacting online and, and that sort of thing. Zoom meetings and whatnot, it's not something that they can necessarily afford to do. And I know that with, uh, nationally, the schools are, are struggling with that issue, issue as well. And some of the utilities, I, um, I think Verizon and others are giving some free services to the schools to try to, um, bridge that gap for those socioeconomic groups of families who, whose children need to study online virtually and just don't have the funds to do all the, get all the connections that they need. You know, cable, et cetera, et cetera. Those are necessi-, uh, those are not necessities. Those are, are, you know, things that people would like to have, but it isn't necessary necessity. So I just want to say, we don't forget the economic gap as well as we look at communication.
Yes, thank you. We have time for one last comment on this topic. Jen, go ahead.
I wonder, as I'm sitting here thinking about it, I wonder if there's a way for the town to help the civic associations cast the net wider. So that we are representing different socioeconomic stratus, we are, we are embracing people of color, bilingual people. I, is there a way the town could augment? Because, you know, in speaking with the Hyanna Civic Association, they have the same membership they've had for a very, very long time. The majority are white, sixty-year-old and over, you know, it's the same demographic and has been since I've been a counselor. It's very hard to find younger membership for the board, although now they have Jake Dewey and they have, um, they've always had Jane Walsh and, you know. It just seems like if there's a way the town could help the civic associations cast the net a little wider, it might be really beneficial to, to bringing in new voices and more voices in general, not necessarily just new, more voices. Um, and we wouldn't just be, you know, singing to the same, the same choir all the time. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I want, uh, I'm going to give us a pause now so that everybody can get lunch and have a little break and stretch their legs and keep awake for our afternoon session. I really appreciate all of your engagement so far. In the afternoon, we're going to discuss infrastructure, which we know also there will be a dedicated time to discuss the CWMP, so we'll, we'll again sort of tread that line of what is part of this strategic conversation today and what gets dealt with in more detail at a later session. We'll also discuss housing and economic development. Um, and I just want to note, my colleague Maggie is not going to be with us this afternoon. She has a family obligation to attend to, but my colleague Toby will be joining us to play the role that she has been playing. So just want to thank you so much, Maggie, for capturing our discussion this morning. With that, Paul or Jessica, any comments before we temporarily adjourn?
No, I, I appreciate everybody's input. I, I did want to say maybe we should look at another committee, Jen. How about a community engagement committee and have a representation from all the civic associations so they can be continuing to talk to one another? I don't know.
That sounds great. I'm booked six nights right now, so. Ask a busy person to do it for you. Okay. I encourage you all to, you know, unglue from your screens for a little while. We'll see you back here at one o'clock. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody, for a, a good first, um, half of the day. Thank you very much.
And I'm going to pause the recording now just so that you don't end up with forty-five minutes of blank. Sorry about that. Anyway, Jessica, let me know if you think there's any, any adaptation you want to do, or if you feel like we need to spend more time on those topics that we've covered quickly and less on the upcoming ones, or what? You're muted, though.
I would defer to the council, Elizabeth. Take a read on if everyone's satisfied and move along.
Okay, sounds good. We'll do it once everybody's back.
I think we're just missing Counselor Bogan.
Yes, and I'm not sure these folks themselves are back yet, you know what I mean? Oh, some of them are, all right. Oh, some of them are. All right. No, Jessica, I just remembered what I was about to say before when Toby called, which was just that, you know, when I do this kind of, oh, here, I'm going to let Toby in. When I do strategic planning, you know, generally it's like a session on each one of these topics at least, you know, and so it allows a little bit more depth. So I like your idea of something that touches them a little bit more frequently and doesn't, you know, you don't have to sort of carry everything in one session. Hey, Toby?
Hi, hi, folks.
This is my colleague Toby Berkman. These are several members of the Barnstable Town Council.
Hi, everyone. Hope you all been having a good day. Good to meet you.
Hey, Toby. Thank you.
Okay.
We're just waiting for a few folks to come back from their lunch break. Toby, I'm going to make you a co-host so that you can share your screen.
Okay. Now, I know Barnstable is a big town, but can I ask if any of you know Leezie McGruder?
Chris, you're muted.
So the first name?
Leezie.
Leezie.
Oh, I know Blue. Yeah, she's related. She's her sister-in-law.
Okay, she lives down in Barnstable Village.
Yep.
And I served with their father, Burns McGruder, years ago on the Barnstable Land Trust Board.
All right. So they're, they were next-door neighbors to me growing up in Newton and there's Blue's nephew, Will, was my best friend growing up. So we went, he invited me into Barnstable over the summers many times.
Cool. Had a beautiful property.
Yeah, I'll say.
Hi, Toby. Welcome.
Are we being recorded, Elizabeth?
Oh, it was paused. I didn't know. Okay. So yes, we are being recorded now. Okay, so anything that's, as I mentioned, anything that's received to me by email by Monday, September 28th, I will incorporate into the revisions. Jessica.
The only concern I have with doing that is that it's not something that's been discussed at the strategic planning, but other it's like all of us, including all of our comments into a revision of what's taken place today. So I have a little concern with just interjecting something in the strategic plan without it being discussed amongst the council.
Yeah.
I think that is very, very, very valid. Could it be done as an addendum? That these, the new comments that were made post this meeting? Jessica?
Well, I think we have the opportunity during the survey to express our specific points. And if Gordon perhaps would like to, you know, circle back to a particular topic and interject a thought to include, then I would not be object to that, depending on time, of course.
Yep.
So it would be kind of included as an addendum to the survey, Jessica?
What is the survey?
I just, because the last time.
We were all given a survey prior to this meeting that we're having this session.
Eric has a thought.
Just for background, so last time we did have counselors be able to submit comments after the meeting. But it went like through Cindy to the, I forget the company we used last time. But then those were were put in such a way on a draft that it was, it was a noticeable, you know, comment that was coming individually from a counselor. It was kind of a set aside. And then we could, when we were looking at the draft, we knew that that was a comment. Didn't say what counselor. But it just was a comment that was included in the draft and then we kind of went through a few iterations to include or not include. But that's how we did it a couple of years ago.
I'm okay with that.
But the information went through Cindy, like in this case, to Elizabeth, not a direct line.
Okay.
And that was looked at, Eric, before we voted to accept?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sounds good. Gordon?
I like a direct line to Elizabeth. Thank you.
I defer to the group. That's fine with me and I can assemble them all, but are there any concerns with it coming directly to me?
I do not.
Paula, is that a concern?
Actually, I just wanted to sort of echo what Jessica said and I'm wondering, Gordon, if the comments you would like to make can't be made maybe at the end of our discussion, just as, you know, just so that we all know what you're, would like to add to the conversation.
Well, no, I mean, there are certain cases where I would like, things that Jen said, that I would second those. But, you know, there's no, if somebody says something in this meeting, no one, there's no button to push to say, I agree with what they say. So we have a sense of what the, it's only one person speaking. I can't speak to every little issue every time. So there's nothing, nothing broad in missing. I'll, I'll.
Okay.
Do things when it comes. Okay.
All right.
Okay.
I'm all set.
Okay, Jessica, and then let's try to delve in after this.
Just quickly, Gordon will have the opportunity when the draft is presented to the council to make amendments to the strategic plan. That's happened before as well, I think, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, let's jump in. Toby, would you mind pulling up the section on infrastructure and we can just get going here? So all, and you'll remember from this morning, comments at any level are, I hate when that happens. See if this creates an issue. Okay.
Can you see it?
Yeah, we can see it. So comments at any level are welcome, but really targeted comments on the strategies specifically would be most appreciated. So here we are under town infrastructure and assets and recall also that there's going to be a dedicated session that you all have on the CWMP. That's more sort of tactical in nature. Sorry, Toby, if you need to save as and start with a new version, we can do that. Sorry. So any comments while we just work out this technical glitch here?
Sorry about this.
No, it's not your fault.
Yes, I'd like to comment.
Please.
I think the asset committee over the last few years has done a really good job identifying gaps where we could liquidate and move things forward. And I've noticed since I've been on the council that that particular committee has addressed some glaring deficits that we've had, like with regard to the armory and the other things that are around town, the schools, and I feel like there's a lot of focus on it now. So I think it's been a job well done. I wouldn't change the goal.
Okay, good. Looking at these strategies, do you all feel like there's anything missing in how you go about maintaining and improving infrastructure assets? Infrastructure and assets? Gordon and then Tracy and then Jessica.
Down on the fourth bullet, it talks about evaluate options for effective economical energy conservation programs. I think we need to, maybe we should put something in there specifically about the Green Communities Program. We should become, we should move forward to adopt the Green Communities Program.
That, again, falls under the manager's purview. That's not under our purview.
We can ask him to do that. We can make that a goal. Right, a strategy?
No, that's how he would, we're asking him to evaluate options. And then he would evaluate options, but we can't tell him exactly what to do. That's under his purview because.
Could we be, if I may, Gordon, could we not be a little bit more circumspect and just say, evaluate options for effective and economical deployment of renewable energy resources?
Okay.
That's good. Tracy, Jessica, then Chris.
So what I had to say was sort of along the same lines as what Gordon said. I notice the last bullet point, support efforts to build resiliency of the town's coastal assets. I think that could be broader to say not just coastal, but, you know, natural resources. So, you know, we're having issues with ponds due to over fertilization or just lawns, that sort of thing. I just think something a little more encompassing than just our coastal assets. I think would, you know, again, broaden that strategy to then include more of the initiatives such as the Green Community Initiative that Gordon mentioned.
Okay. Any concern with sort of couching that more broadly in natural resources or natural resources, comma, such as coastal assets or something like that?
How about the town's environmental and coastal assets? Or, I don't know.
Okay.
Environmental assets or, I don't, well, natural resources is really. Yeah.
Okay. Jessica and then Chris.
I would have comment about the goal, maybe expanding the goal itself, adding another line while maintaining. Or it says maintain and improve existing infrastructure, capital assets, aquatic resources. But I wonder, in strategy, we have continued to inventory and evaluate the status of town assets and dispose of assets as appropriate. So maybe that should be incorporated in the goal a little more specifically, but.
The disposal?
Yeah, but I want to somehow tie a financial to the infrastructure and assets.
Something about sort of understanding the arc of the useful life? Is that kind of what you mean?
Something. You know, we're faced with so many assets that are failing and are going to have to be disposed of one way or another, either by demolition or by sale. But, you know, and to that, it adds to our financial health if we keep the assets in good stead or dispose of them. So somehow in the goal for town infrastructure and assets, I don't know, we talked about also taking a private road, so perhaps acquiring should be part of it as well.
Right.
Just.
Fall under the strategies there? Well, it talks about continue to inventory and evaluate the status of town assets and dispose of assets as appropriate. I mean, you could put dispose or acquire assets as appropriate.
Yeah, maybe that's what I need. It's just the word acquire there, but I kind of wanted the goal of our town infrastructure to, you know, to maintain. But at the same time, look to increase or dispose, you know.
Right. The goal only talks about existing infrastructure. There's nothing about new. So.
Yeah, yeah.
So you could say something like maintain and improve existing infrastructure, capital assets and aquatic resources. Well, yeah, why don't, why don't we just put a note there, Toby, and I will think of a way to wordsmith that that you can review.
So we'll.
You do something about, you know, review needs. You know, so that could be disposal or acquisition.
Based on needs. Yes, I see you, Paul. So Jessica, sorry, we finished, just go to Chris and Paul.
Okay, thank you.
Does that capture what you wanted to be thinking about, Elizabeth?
Yes.
New assets. Okay.
Yes, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you. Regarding the suggestion by Gordon regarding the adoption of the Green Communities Program, perhaps we want to shift that to the desired outcome because I too agree that we leave money on the table by not participating in this program and not only would it help our town financially, but also environmentally. So perhaps instead of a strategy, it would be an outcome.
Yeah, I don't think we should put that in there because what you're asking the manager to do is to evaluate and that this has been evaluated. There's a ton of negative on that. So you can't just tell him this is the outcome when his evaluation is going to be in the negative. We're asking him to manage our assets.
What if, what if it was framed in terms of, you know, evaluate all opportunities to be eligible for energy-related grants or something like that? Because I think that is mostly what that program enables, right?
Well, we're not going to get into a Green Communities debate tonight, but that's a long conversation. But you could put under strategies about grants.
Just, can I make a point of clarification that leadership isn't making here is that he's been asked by the leadership to evaluate that program within the last six months and it's moving forward and should, the application should be ready by the end of November. So.
We're leaving out a lot of nuance on that. I don't want to get into a big.
Yeah, and I don't think that should be our focus going forward, but anyway.
We've noted it in notes and we will try to place it where it is appropriate. Okay, Paul?
Thank you. To address maybe the goal. I think where it says make improvements when necessary. It's kind of a given. I was thinking more maintain, improve existing infrastructure, capital assets and aquatic resources. And address these town assets to strive towards best use going forward. That line.
That's what I was thinking. Yeah, something a little bit more positive or action-oriented.
Could you repeat that and address these town assets to?
And address these town assets to strive towards best use going forward.
Wait, was that the hockey player who said that?
Why is to invest?
Sometimes I hit the net.
Thank you. Other comments? Was there someone? Oh, Gordon, go ahead.
Well, I was thinking in terms of infrastructure and assets that we need to, we need to find more in terms of the blue economy. We need to find more, ask more, more ways to water. More infrastructure on the water. In Barnstable Harbor, we take 6 million oysters out of there a year. The south side, we take 7 million oysters. There's always, there's always a need for more ways to water and infrastructure for trucks, ice, loading, unloading. Somehow, I know it's, I know it's always been on the list, is more ways to water, but.
Yeah, great, okay. We noted as a desired outcome. Other comments? Gordon?
I think, I think somewhere, the state has a program called the Global Warming Solutions Act that requires the state to be at a certain level of energy use in 2050 and they're working on a deadline for 2030 and a, you know, a goal for that. And somehow I think we should be acknowledging that and planning ahead for that. We'd be saying, basically be saying that there's, you know, that climate change is a real thing and that everything, every decision we make should look through the lens of climate change as we reduce our greenhouse gas use to net zero, which is what the state is required to do by 2050.
Okay. So Jessica, I see you and I'll come to you in just a sec. So would something, what, how does it sound, something along the lines of sort of?
In accordance, that's good.
Seek to evaluate infrastructure through the lens of climate impacts and make, you know, sort of updates as possible or something like that.
If we're planning any new building, it should be thought of in terms of it's going to live, it's going to last 30, 40 years. What's going to power it in 30, 40 years? Where's the energy going to come from?
Yep. Toby, yeah, can you, right, let's make a note and let's, we'll think of the right way to sort of slot that in.
Right. Gordon, so should I add a piece here on energy, source of energy in the future or how would you dead drop the addresses?
With regard to this topic, because I think this more, it falls in line with the environment and natural resources strategy or, yeah, the topic. There, on the third bullet, it talks about innovative techniques and with regards to neighborhood flooding, water access and extreme events and weather and including those brought on by climate change. It's already mentioned in the plan.
I'm looking at the local comprehensive plan 2010.
I'm just looking at our strategic plan, Gordon, and I believe what we're talking about, the infrastructure and assets, I get that. But what you're speaking of is more in lines with the environment and natural resource topic of our plan.
I'm going to note this, and I will, I will try to suggest either look at the environment and natural resources section and this one and try to suggest an option. For time, I need to move us forward just because we have two other topics to get to. So I apologize. We have time, one or two more comments on this section. David and then Paula. David, you're muted.
And I don't want to belabor the point, but I think what Gordon's getting to, and I would agree if I'm correct, it, as a desired outcome, the town's deployment of energy resources should be consistent with state targets.
Yes.
Okay, noted. Thank you. Paula?
I just wanted to amend that last strategy about support efforts to build resiliency of the town's natural resources. I think it's really important as we move forward that we're also looking at our physical assets as well, that, you know, there, there may be some of our buildings and structures that are, you know, in areas that could be affected by climate change or other weather events. And so I think we should include both of those.
So to build the resiliency of the town's sort of natural and built environment?
Yes.
Or natural and built resources? Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you, physical assets or built resources?
Built resources, yeah, it's fine.
Okay. This is Whirlwind, and I apologize, but I'm going to move us on to the next section just looking at the clock. So let us move to housing. So here we are. Goal: Identify needs and develop, promote and monitor town-wide housing initiatives serving diverse ages, incomes and needs. And I do recall that Mark Els's presentation had some points related to housing, including, just, just for you all to note, a comprehensive zoning review and, and some questions that he posed about sort of where the town wants to put its emphasis in development, in sort of market rate, workforce, affordable. Those were some of the questions he posed.
Yeah, I think this looks pretty good. I mean, a lot of the issues, even going back two years ago, we knew was we don't have the infrastructure to support density. But obviously, we're moving on that. So there's some opportunities that are opening. So those really overlap, you know, zoning and the density really overlaps with infrastructure. So this, this still holds up pretty well. We are looking at town assets for housing opportunities. So maybe we could add to this, but we seem to be pretty much on track with this.
Okay, good. I see Jen, Jessica, Tracy.
Yeah, I mean, I think that we're, we're doing some strong work in the zoning committee, working to look at accessory dwelling units and form-based, how, form-based, what's the word? Paula, help me.
Form-based zoning.
Zoning, thank you. I'm, I reached my Zoom max.
Form-based code.
Thank you. So I think we're, you know, we're working and we have a very strong effort behind this, and we all take it very seriously, especially, you know, recognizing the fact that some assets that, that can be repurposed are town-wide and not just in Hyannis, which has always been a huge concern of mine, that we share, we share the burden of high-density housing throughout the town whenever possible. Thank you.
Jessica, then Tracy.
Well, I would urge that we form, and this is a strategy, to form a committee of community members to, to look at zoning review in the town, not just have it a council function, but have it encompassed with representatives from each of the seven villages.
Maybe just amend, amend the membership of that committee. We've done that before.
Yeah, yeah.
So with regard to the fourth strategy, explore permanent supportive housing solutions, including regional collaboration and creative financing to address homelessness in Barnstable. I feel like that strategy could be made a little broader, not just to include homelessness, but also housing scarcity and sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? It's not insecure housing.
Yeah.
In other words, people that are not necessarily homeless, but all have housing insecurity and sort of a lack of inventory.
Lack of options, yeah.
Yeah, I feel like it needs to be a little, it would be great if that strategy was a little more expansive than just addressing homelessness. But I think it should also include housing insecurity and also a lack of inventory.
Okay. Thank you. Paula and then David.
So in, in terms of the way that's currently written, where it's talking about exploring permanent supportive housing solutions, that's very much a specific kind of term of art that is targeted toward homeless folks that have disabilities. So it may be that we want to strike the permanent supportive portion and just say explore housing solutions, including regional collaboration and creative finance to address homelessness and those who are housing insecure in Barnstable or something. So it would, it would be more expansive, but it, it would eliminate sort of a very specific term that has, you know, is a very specific solution.
Right, I see. Any concerns with?
To address homelessness or, and housing insecurity in Barnstable.
Okay.
Is part of that suggestion to remove the inventory idea here? Or is that, is it more?
It's the permanent, yes, right.
If, if I may, because that's the question I have, it's the use of the word insecurity. I'm not sure everyone will know what that means. And frankly, I think it's a little ambiguous. Are we talking affordability and availability or something else? Because if that's what we're talking about, I suggest we, we say that rather than insecurity.
Tracy, do you want to elaborate on your intent?
Yeah, I was, I was using that term, housing insecurity. I, I don't know if that's actually the term of art that's used. It are, it's people who are on the margin of homelessness. So there, thanks, Jessica, if you could elaborate.
Well, I, you know, the, the definition is exactly what we're referring to, I think, is the lack of security in an individual shelter, that it's a result of high housing costs relative to income, or housing quality, unstable neighborhoods and/or overcrowding. And it may not necessarily include homelessness. So we're defining both, I think.
I see Paula and David. Let us know if you have a suggestion of how you think it should be made more specific.
I've offered my, my suggestion, which was to use the words affordability and availability. But if folks don't think that works, fine.
Sorry, Dave, what if we went with lack of inventory, which has to do with availability, and said, lack of both affordable invent, I don't know, that doesn't work. Lack of both affordable housing and housing shortages?
Let me, I suggest I take this offline and I'll present a couple of options to you all, knowing that it's not final here, if that's okay. Let me go to Paula.
So I would like to look at the last bullet, and I'm sure this will not generate consensus, but I feel like the use of our town assets, if they're going to be directed at housing opportunities, should be to create affordable housing opportunities. You know, if, you know, it, there's, there's an issue if we were going to completely dispose of assets and we're, we're just trying to, you know, reduce our inventory and get money for it. That's, that's one, one pathway. But if we're using town assets to actually create housing opportunities, I think that it should be geared toward, or targeted toward a population that, you know, we've addressed in the previous bullet.
Responses, concerns, affirmation of that? Paul is clapping.
I agree. I don't mean to clap, but I wanted to talk. So to David's point, I think it's right on. I mean, some people, even people of means, availability, some people can afford a bigger price, but they're not even available. And to other people, they're simply unaffordable based on the, on the basic formula of not spending more than 30% of your income. And some people don't even have that. So I, I think inventory always sounds to me like, oh, you just add to the inventory, or you just create the inventory, or you order more inventory. But when we come to housing, the fact is the availability is just not enough. We know that we're short 1,500 apartments, minimum. And if we had those 1,500 apartments, they would all be taken up in a giffy. And we know because we don't have that availability, there are some homes that are supporting one and two and three families in order for people to survive. So I think the words affordability and availability speak clearly to the issue that we, that we have to work with. And finally, we are, I think we have the political will in the council to push this forward, and we certainly have it from management. So I, I think we can see some improvements on that, and it's something that we can definitely look back on and see if we've met any kind of outcomes on this.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. Eric?
Yeah, just a quick, a quick positive note and then a comment. You know, since we did this a couple of years ago, we kind of elevated this. And since then, you know, we have probably about 600 apartment-style units that are in various stages of being completed or in the permitting pipeline, which is a great step forward. So two years from now, a lot of those will be, have people living in them. But what really drives the rents, obviously, we've talked about before, is cost of construction. I mean, it is very difficult to build any type of residential housing that's going to be, you know, in that 175 a square foot to 200 a square foot type price tag. So that really limits, when you're talking about affordable, what's the definition of affordable? Are you talking about $1,000 apartments or less? It really becomes an impossible math equation. So one of the ways we really need to try to address that is to drive the cost down. There's only so much we can do on that because the land is the land. But when we, in the first bullet point, we're talking about, you know, zoning and permitting. So really digging in on what we put developers through as far as, you know, regulations and planning and all the costs involved in that, and the lawyers and the constant, you know, the multiple boards they have to go through. That is something that we can look at to try to take some of the sting out of that. And then obviously, we have our tax incentive, you know, committee, which we've started to do some housing incentives through that. So these are the things on the, on the, on the margins that we can help drive that overall cost down because that's going to lead to developers being able to offer units at a lower rent. But the rent isn't something that's just picked out of the air. It's, it's driven by what is the cost to build this? And then I got to run it. And we've seen some of the housing developers, I mean, they're operating on very, very thin margins. So I just want to bring up the point, point that the zoning and the regulation piece is very important to try to drive down as much as we can from a legislative body, you know, the cost of developing housing to make it more affordable.
Thank you, Eric. I didn't note any sort of big changes, although I do think that Toby inserted a little bit about sort of adding regulatory hurdles as part of what's being addressed in the first bullet. Let us know if there was more that you wanted edited there, if it was a note. And meanwhile, I'll go to Deborah and then Matthew.
I just wanted to agree with Eric on that because those have been roadblocks, I feel, to getting true, and we keep talking about affordable housing, real affordable housing, getting those rents downs where people who are, were working two or three jobs just to make ends meet to pay, pay rent, and getting them down to a point where you can pay maybe a hundred dollars, I mean, a hundred, I'm sorry, a thousand dollars for an apartment here. And, you know, all of those, those types of, you know, things that he talked about are roadblocks to actually getting to that, to what we really need, that workforce housing that's needed here. Look at the types of jobs that many people have. It does, we, we just still can't fulfill the type, some of the type of housing that we, we truly need for those who are, don't have families, that they're living singly, don't have professional jobs. And so we, we, we really need to come up with other incentives that will help us get around those roadblocks to finding, being able to produce that type of housing for our residents. And I've seen this as well, on fixed incomes.
Thank you. I want to go to Matthew, and I just want to note again, the, the topics that Mark Els brought up around, I think we've sort of begun to address the zoning reform by the idea that Jessica suggested. And then also just, do you want to sort of name how you are prioritizing market rate versus workforce versus affordable? And what level of affordability? Is that something that you want to weigh in on and provide guidance at this point? But to Matthew now, and you don't have to address that, but I wanted to raise it.
Actually, I was, my plan was actually to address some of that. Anyway, I, I think when the, this plan was put in place in that bullet point that Councilor Schnepp had mentioned, explore the possibility of using town assets to create, at the time, private housing opportunities. I think there was a point in time, and I realized this when I was taking a tour of the town recreation properties that we own. And some of them, and you look, wow, I didn't, I didn't know we owned this property, or I didn't know we owned this property either because at the time, you know, people think, you know, because the, the properties that get used, you're very much well aware, the baseball fields, the soccer fields, where kids play. Obviously, I have young kids. So, you know, I noticed that those, okay, those are owned by the town. But there was definitely this amount, and as I've been on the asset management group, you, you start finding certain buildings that we have that, well, maybe we can, you know, use this, and maybe there's a butter that might be interested in merging a lot. Maybe there's an opportunity, while there's a house on that property that's still viable, maybe we can just, you know, especially in this market, sell that property, you know, back to a private, because that's, that's a single-family home, different things like that. So I think that that was what, but, but to Paula's point, you know, obviously we need to make things more affordable. At the same time, I also think, and call me a dreamer, but the, people still want to own homes. People want to be able to invest in their own homes. And a lot of these affordable type options, they, they're not going to see a return on their investment. So though I think it's important to have the hacks, the habitat for humanities, I've supported both organizations. I think they do, they, you know, do great work. And, but at the same time, I, I love to see more opportunity where people, even if we put like just a little bit of a framework of a box of maybe just a certain amount of square footage or certain options, that there's affordable homes where young people and older people that are, that want to age in place here on Cape Cod, they can downsize and still own a home, have an asset that they can invest in and beautify. I'd like to see more opportunities like that. So maybe smaller housing, you know, instead of necessarily, you know, big developments, that type of thing. And I think people are looking more towards that, you know, kind of a tiny, tiny house village concept, you know. But anyway, that's just my two cents. But I think it's, people leaning millennials, they don't want big houses. And, but if we, but let's still try to give them the opportunity to own their own home. So, and also I think as we create, you know, obviously create stock, then I think in demand stays the same, then affordability will become more available. Thank you.
And I'm just looking, do we have anything that addresses sort of the need for diverse types of housing in here? To your point of, you know, apartments versus single-family and size options and aging in place. Okay, thank you for that. Jessica?
Yes, I, I think, you know, we're talking SROs too. We're in dire need of those, single rooms apartments. And I'm all for tiny houses. The drawback to that is our two-acre zoning, which is fiercely. The drawback to that is our two-acre zoning, which is fiercely guarded, I know, in my precinct. And so there might be difficulty with that. But with searing coming down the line, I think it's certainly feasible. And I'd love to see some town assets be converted to tiny homes with a community garden and very little, and, and I don't mean, we, 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 I'm not sure if we have any trailer parks in the town of Barstool. I'm not aware of any. But, correct me if I'm wrong. But I think this is a trend, and it certainly gears towards younger families and seniors wanting to be surrounded by younger families too, which helps them age in place.
We have time for a few more comments. Paula?
So to the extent that, you know, higher density does sometimes conflict with our wastewater needs, to the extent that the town could either find ways to support or even subsidize some of the alternative wastewater processes for areas that aren't going to be sewed in the near future. I mean, even though our plan, you know, it could be 20 years before some of our parts of our town. And I think that there are innovative ways to create, you know, in, you know, pocket or packet systems, or whatever it is, that, you know, we definitely should make sure that our comprehensive waste management plan is very assertive in trying to identify what those could be, so that they could be available for, you know, denser housing outside of Hyannis.
Thank you. And maybe we'll note that that may be tucked under the infrastructure section. Although, of course, it's very cross-cutting here.
Right.
Sorry, was there someone with a hand raised that I missed? Tracy?
Thanks, Elizabeth. Deborah and David both mentioned zoning, the first bullet point, as a barrier to developers. But I did want to say that at a recent Cape Built presentation, they say that the biggest barriers to affordable housing in Barstool County is, one, the price of land, and, two, the cost of labor. They deal with the second by doing modular. But looking at that last bullet point, I think there is a real opportunity with town assets where we have eliminated the cost of the land as a stakeholder to make those opportunities more viable. And, you know, for example, in Seattle, as you know, housing in Seattle is incredibly expensive. Essentially, the city created housing cooperatives, where essentially the land, your real estate, is always part of the cooperative. It's like a 100-year lease or something. But, and it can be inherited, it can just never be sold above market. It always has to be sold. So I think there are ways as a town to both give people what they want in terms of what Matt was talking about, the opportunity to, you know, have your thing to call your own, and, you know, to say if you're going to put equity into it, that equity will be realized when you sell it. But to also, in perpetuity, ensure that this remains affordable in some way. And I'm not, I'm not using affordable in terms of low income, very low income, just affordable as in below or just at market rate. So I think there's a huge opportunity there, at least from a housing perspective.
I've heard a few of you bring this up now, so I just want to sort of try to see if we can gel on something here. The need for sort of, you know, diverse types of housing, the need to provide sort of entry points, but that still allows somebody to sort of realize the investment they put in. Should this be at a sort of, should this be its own strategy? And how would you frame it if so? We've got a number of notes here, which we will do our best to kind of synthesize. Something about, you know, pursue innovative, you know, ways to, I'm hearing sort of like innovations, like new, new sort of structures and formats, such as like tiny house villages or cooperatives, something like that. And I'm hearing using town-owned land for sort of the biggest bang for the buck to do those kind of transformative things in a way that might not be possible where the cost of land is high. Are there other key pieces of that that need to be named?
If, if I may, frankly, I viewed Paula's observation or edit to the fourth bullet as encompassing that. Fully ambiguous, such that it is sufficiently broad to bring those sorts of initiatives under the tent.
Okay. Toby, maybe will you put that final one as sort of like a sub-bullet there? And I will just kind of, in my editing, I will either move some of the specifics over to the ideas column or something else. Okay, thanks, David. We have time for just one more comment on housing, I think. Anybody we haven't heard from on this topic yet? Or Deborah, floor is yours.
I was just going to say that we, you know, we could, the, the town puts forth the effort to create this type of housing that we're talking about, but also look for developers who, you know, who'd be interested in pursuing, you know, the, the concerns that we have about, you know, doing these little pocket areas of, as Matt was talking about, tiny houses or whatever. There may be developers out there who are interested, or we're seeking those, seek those type of developers. You know, would be interested in, in, you know, doing something along that line.
Yeah. So seeking to find sort of developer partners who share some of these goals, that's a nice idea. Paula, if it's very quick, and then I want to move-
Very quick. Just something to throw out that, and I know this has been brought up by one of our developers in town, looking at our property tax system as a way of incentivizing the creation or maintenance of affordable housing.
Okay. Okay. All right. Again, whirlwind, but we're plowing through here. Apologize for the mixed metaphor. Let's go talk about economic development. And I think based on what I heard from you all in the surveys, you know, there's interest in thinking about economic recovery post-COVID, or sort of in light of COVID. And so I don't know if you all feel like at this level, at the strategic level, for the next few years, that should be named explicitly alongside just your general economic development strategy, but I wanted to name that.
One thing I think we should add in that didn't exist two years ago is we have the Economic Development Task Force now. And they are actively meeting. They'll actually be before us this fall with recommendations. So that's made up of folks that, the not-town councilors, I'm the liaison to the committee, but it's people that are out there. It's developers, it's engineers, it's people in hospitality, medical, real estate. And, and the reasoning behind that was to have a committee made up of folks that are out there every single day, trying to do business with the town, trying to do business on the Cape, and coming to us with what they're running into as issues. So they are looking at housing, they're looking at waterways, they're looking at zoning, regulations, commercial lending. So I think we should, we have it as a, as a bullet point to continue to support the zoning regulatory committee, which right now is councilors. But also, we should be very supportive of that task force that was put together a couple, a couple of years ago.
I see Deborah, Paula, then Jen.
I, I agree with the, the idea of supporting the task force. The COVID was somewhat of a surprise, you know, event that occurred. And I, and I look at California and Louisiana and all these areas that are having these natural disasters that are coming along. And to keep a task force in, in place that, that can handle and and look, look, be prepared for those kinds of things, because we, we've kind of escaped a lot of those things. But everybody, I think, gets, is going to get their turn. You know, we've been lucky here in, on the Cape to not have any major hurricanes hit us, this devastated us, or kind of fires that you're seeing, you know, on the, on the West Coast. But I, I think that we, Mother Nature's changing, the climate, they, there's climate change. And we just, there could be a chance that it, it could happen to us here. So I think having these tasks, that task force in place, we should support them and, and, you know, and just encourage them to keep an eye out on, you know, and, and brainstorm, do scenarios. What if something here happens in the Cape?
I wonder what you're saying, Deborah, at the risk of using a sort of a buzzword, but it sort of sounds like you're talking about economic resiliency and sort of as Toby's writing, sort of like disaster preparedness, or sort of pre-planning for the next sort of hard shoe to drop on small, on businesses. So I wonder if we, we form that into a strategy in some way. Meanwhile, Paula and then Jen wanted to speak.
Yeah, we, we had some major nor'easters, so.
Yeah. So I, I kind of wanted to pick up on what Matt, Matt had been talking about earlier, and it's kind of tied to the COVID thing of, of how do we support our, you know, the, the folks that are now working from home? Do we need to make sure that, you know, we are fully taking advantage of open Cape, our broadband capacity? Do we, do we really have that type of infrastructure to, to support economic development in all the different ways it may proceed, especially after COVID? And in light of the future disasters that we may all be facing, so.
Great. Jen?
Yeah, I just, I really like the idea of the task force in general. And I wonder if we can't maybe put that back in and apply it to the communication piece that I was talking about with getting more civic involvement, maybe a task force there of, of different residents to help us find out how exactly they want to be communicated to. It's, I just think it's a really good idea to, you know, loop in some expertise from, from the people who know what they need.
Okay, we'll note that, and I will bring it up to the communications section as a note. Jessica?
I want to be able to support the businesses, whether they're happening on Main Street or in, in your own home. But at the same time, too, given the, the COVID situation and, and childcare and schooling, and, and some of it's remote and some of it's onsite. And how this is affecting, you know, families and economically, I want to see the town explore, you know, the possibility of using some monies for families for subsidizing early childcare. Now, I don't know where that falls. Just to maybe free up money so they can afford housing, or to be able to work because their child is not at school. So who knows what's going to happen.
Thank you. David, did you want to say something? No, okay. Other comments? Maybe looking at these notes, should we try to see if they can be translated into strategies?
So Elizabeth, I'd just say, the only thing that I've added here was this reference to the Economic Development Task Force, disaster planning and economic resiliency, right here. So I don't know if that, that accurately reflects the will of the group, but there are also a number of other ideas over here.
Any comments on what we've noted so far?
On what was just said, maybe just leave it as economic resiliency, because when you're getting disaster planning, that, to me, really is, you know, police and fire, you know, DPW, like, that's not really the commercial bank guy on the task force, the guy that owns the restaurant, or the person over at Cape Cod Healthcare. Economic resiliency, yes, because they were part of the conversation to get some of the small businesses going back in May, like with the Main Street project of shut down a lane, and they, some of the members were involved in that conversation. So I think maybe disaster preparedness is not appropriate for this particular task force.
Sort of at the intersection, but not the purview of these folks.
Right. Like, if there was a curveball that's affecting businesses, you know, they, they could have some insight into what we could do legislatively, maybe to help out, but.
Thanks. Any other refinements of what we've captured so far, or other ideas to put forward? Are we, are we content with this section? Anything else recovery related that you want to name? That's probably the big change. Paula, go ahead.
I know that Jen has often brought up in our town council meetings about having a stronger relationship with the community college. And I think that that really could, you know, serve as a economic driver, you know, to have, make sure that we have a trained labor force for the areas that, so again, I, I don't know exactly how to articulate that for economic development, but, you know, in looking at our available resources, how can we ensure that they're, they're being optimized to create new job opportunities here in, in, in town?
Thank you. Okay, let's take maybe one more comment here, and then we might have a little bit of time to revisit the discussion on communication and governance. But just see if there's any last comment to make on this section. All right. Toby, when you finish that tweak, will you scroll back up to, I think it was the second section in the document? Unless there's anywhere else that you would prefer to spend our, our 15 minutes of time we've bought ourselves here? Any other topics that we haven't touched at all that you want to name anything on, or? Okay. So this one, we had a lot to say, and we just didn't have a lot of time to think through all of it. There were some really good ideas about just ways to kind of increase the reach and who, who is being included in sort of discourse about town issues. There were some comments about ensuring that anytime someone does sort of engage with the town council or other town offices, making sure that there's sort of good responsiveness going back to them, and sort of to reinforce the usefulness of people engaging with their local government. There was discussion of innovative channels for reaching people and using different sort of styles to reach different kind of learners. Is there anything more you want to add here? And and I also wonder, Paul and Jessica, if there's anything on the sort of intra-governmental stuff that you want to highlight, which we didn't really get to? Jessica?
I would just reiterate, and it has, has been expressed other ways, but in any event, the clear understanding of management and the legislative body, and that the council is the legislative body. And outside of the parameters of our strategic plan, we rely on our skilled management to operate the town. And so we, just to be clear on our our contribution to a town that has good governance is to know what is ours to do. And sometimes that's gotten a little confused. And so I, I think that that's something that we need to recognize.
How could we make that clearer and sort of more harmonized, do you think, Paul?
Well, I, I think, you know, a plate is full to simply be looking at, you know, it's more than passing the, the budget, and it's more than selecting who the town manager is going to be. It is to support and trust the town management. That does not mean that we don't get reports from town management and might make some recommendations. But sometimes I think we get really picky at, at how, what we're saying to management. And, you know, so I, I think that that's not always helpful. And and, and again, focusing on what's ours to do, and that's good legislation, listening to the public is one of our major tasks. And so on governance, again, looking at our charter and looking at the organizational charter, the public is, is there. And it's, it's more than philosophical that our citizens to to inform us. So public comment, the word itself, the way we're structured, sounds like, you know, making a, a comment. But I think when we talk about engagement, my dream is engage the public so that they come and they tell us the pond or the, the lake. come and they tell us the pond or the, the lake is polluted. And then what I want, I want to encourage them is to say at the same time, and I'm willing to stop using the fertilizer. I'm willing to make sure that my septic system is adequate and working properly. I'm willing to see and contribute to the cost of better sewage or better alternative systems. So there's, there's not just public comment, it's engagement in that we are all working together for the, for the better results. And I think that sometimes we just do not translate that back to the public. It's a two-way street, and we have to make sure that everybody feels comfortable participating. I, I know that it's sometimes very difficult for the public to come and speak in front of us, and, but they need to be heard, not just listened to. And right now, I would say, from the work that I've been doing in the last year, that many public say, yes, you have to listen to me because there is public comment, but I don't think you, you're hearing me at all, and I don't think I'm being considered seriously. So we got to get over that somehow, if we're going to make a lot of progress. And we cannot move forward on this big infrastructure that we're doing unless we all agree that we're going to work together on this, the public included. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul. And that gets at some of the strategies discussed here about sort of getting people with, with, getting people's heads together about ways to do community engagement or some kind of task force. So I see Jessica, Eric, Tracy, and Chris.
I'm just a little historical. When I first joined the council, I saw that the council's ability to perform what they were elected to do had been somewhat abdicated to the corner office. And I'm so happy that now the council is of an understanding because of how strong our town manager is and how he, he's put in place very fine department heads. I think it, you know, it makes our job a lot easier. And we're there to communicate and be that conduit from our constituency to the corner office. Sometimes that has been, and this going back to, to the orientation of us as counselors, you know, we're here, we're elected and we're kind of thrown into the mix with very little training or knowledge of what's required. But the biggest thing is communication and conduit of information from the public, from all of our constituents. And, and I take into consider, I may not express a, a response to public comment, but I certainly consider every single public comment, whether they be email or verbal. So, you know, let's remember that communication, it's also internally between the council and should be between the council and the manager. I mean, I think our manager's been able to indulge us and to have us directly contact department heads. Getting any further down into the staff is, to me, is micromanaging.
Eric, and then Tracy, and then Chris.
Yeah, Jessica hit on a little bit, but I was going to mention, when I first got back to the council, it, it was very much all in the, in the town manager's office, and we didn't have that appropriate balance, which is clearly, you know, spelled out in our, our charter and our enabling acts and our org chart. So it's been good to watch, you know, the various iterations of councils since I came on back in 2013, and Jessica was on before me, to kind of get that balance back. And, and we're in a good place for that. One thing that might be helpful is, you know, we do an annual report every year that kind of highlights what's going on in the town, and that might be an opportunity for just a quick overview of our town structure, you know, our council role, manager role, and then also reporting out on our goals here, you know, what, what did we do that ties back to these goals? And that could be certainly something the council asks the town manager and the staff to do as part of a communication at that time every year where we present the, the annual report. And that's available, you know, to, to everyone in town.
That's nice, kind of civics, civic engagement and transparency together. Like, okay, great. Tracy, and then Chris.
My comment has to do more with sort of the form of the strategic plan, and with particular to this item. You know, we discussed earlier, and Eric brought up, you know, stating the goal as broadly as possible. And I, I think as well with the strategies, that those should be somewhat broad. So as I'm looking at some of the newer bullet points that were added on the bottom here, promoting and accepting remote participation in proceedings to increase citizen involvement, I feel like that's a subset of the next bullet point, which is develop tactics to effectively solicit public input. So I feel like some of those sort of listed as a strategic plan bullet point are either redundant or, you know, the last point, partnering with civic associations to cast wider communication net. If we look at the third bullet point, work with community groups to disseminate information to their members. I like the use of the word community group, because I feel like community group encompasses Cape Cod young professionals, you know? That's a huge resource we haven't tapped, which I think frankly represents probably a lot more young people in the town of Barnstable than all five or six civic associations together. But I just think it's, I, I just think we need to look at, before we're adding bullet points, if we want something realistic, you know, I, I don't think they're bad points, but I think they're better relegated to the notes, ideas sort of outcome. Then I think we should focus on keeping the points as broad as possible. So to me, like promoting, accepting remote participation and partnering with civic associations seem like they are already covered under other bullet, bullet points under the strategies.
Yep, right. And I think you're right, that develop tactics to effectively solicit input and engagement is sort of the umbrella over both of those. So we will, we will tweak that.
The other thing I wanted to say about governance, which again pulls in on the communication and accessibility and transparency, that is more of a node idea, would be, you know, doing some things that are less formal, i.e. let's have Channel 18 maybe do some interviews, you know? I did not know what Paul Hebert's favorite candy was, but I guess what I'm getting at is things to make the staff and the town council more relatable, more accessible to the residents. And, you know, maybe that's the adult community center, having Barnstable schoolchildren interview some seniors in the town, just things that build community, build our connection to each other, where we're seeing our similarities rather than our differences. But I think more of those feel-good things that sort of highlight that we are a community as a way not only to bring some warmth and some fun, but to encourage more people to want to be part of that and to want to, you know, have a Channel 18 program that's just all about different volunteer opportunities and engaging different people to talk about those things, I think. Thanks.
Thank you.
That's great.
Chris? There we go.
Thank you, sorry about that. Thank you again for this opportunity to readdress the communications and governance. As a new counselor, I know there's plenty for me to learn, and I'm happy to learn from my more experienced counselors, but perhaps we can more utilize what used to be more frequently used workshops for the town council, whereas we're not taking a vote, but just addressing certain topics, perhaps like zoning, which has become very high-profile lately, and the wastewater plans, and maybe the fire districts and water districts. So maybe those are issue-focused workshops that perhaps not only we as a council cannot come up to speed, but also convey to the citizenry what's going on. What are, I, um, I have thought of for a while, but never really, never talked about it to anyone, but perhaps we could, sorry to say this, engage in a couple of town council meetings on a Saturday. I know this is spoiling a beautiful day today for us, but for elders or people who have family obligations that don't make them as available on a Thursday night, perhaps at least once a year, we could have a Saturday where we host public comment and public engagement, and maybe have a little, once we meet again, volunteer exhibition in the back of the room or something like that, some of the volunteer opportunities. But I don't think that we deliver to our citizenry enough information on how they can become engaged either as a participant or as a volunteer.
Thank you. I see Jen, I just want to make one comment, a little thread that I'm seeing here, and maybe this is already captured in the strategies, but I've heard several comments about sort of like helping increase the capacity of the council, you know, around sort of doing these like topically focused workshops to help you all gain really good grounding before you're kind of weighing in and voting on things. I've heard about some efforts that you're all already doing to try to create like a sort of guidebook or onboarding for new council members. So I wonder if there's something at the sort of top level that you want to say about, you know, kind of organizational development for the council or something like that? And feel free to say no, but I've just heard a few mentions of it. And Jen, go ahead, you were waiting anyway.
Yeah. So, you know, for me, the whole idea of public engagement is reaching beyond the citizens that are already engaged. Those citizens we're thankful for, we have them, they're lively at public comment, it's, it's casting the, the net wider and farther than that to get a better representation from our community. That's what it's all about to me, not necessarily a Saturday meeting that would be attended by the same people that attend the Thursday meeting, whether in person or via Zoom. And also remember that if you have a town council meeting on a Saturday, you require staff to also be working on a Saturday. So it's not just, it's not just us, it's them. I like the idea of, of focused workshops, but the problem is, we meet only twice a month. So our agendas are typically jammed or completely vacant after budget. So to me, there's like, there's an opportunity with our, with our town council meetings to, you know, have more measured maybe workshops, and it just, they're lopsided. Like when we're in budget season, we go till, you know, 12, 12:30, and everybody knows that, it's not, not unusual. When we have something like the STR thing, we're going till 12:31 o'clock in the morning. So maybe a way to utilize it at the time better would be to have more special meetings when hot topics come up like that. But that still doesn't solve the problem of citizen engagement. Like some people, like in Osterville, for instance, very lively, you know, there's a, the Osterville Village Association, there's a lot of engagement there. Hyannis, not so much. We have a very, very small representative of our, of our, of our little village, very small membership in the Hyannis Civic Association. So how do we, how do we expand that? That's the question. That's why I think a focus group would be a really good thing for that. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for just one final comment, and then we need to wrap up this. Paul, go ahead. You're muted though, there you go.
Thank you very much. And, and Jen, Jen makes some very, very good points there. And actually, the, the paper has asked if I could participate. The new editor to our region from the Cape Cod Times has pointed out that we have very late, some very, very late meetings, and I was wondering why. If you're still with selectmen in town meeting, some town meetings are extended for one day or two days, simply because everybody has a right to speak at that, that event, and goes on and on. And the fact is that I think city counselors in many places meet once a week. And so the fact that we meet only twice a month is one of the reasons that we necessitate staying up so late. And I appreciate Jen's comment that, you know, sometimes I think, you know, the will of a council could be, let's, let's have another special meeting, so it might be three times in a month. If that's the way we're going to cover all of the material we need to cover without staying till, you know, 12 and 1 o'clock in the morning. So I, I think that that needs a lot of consideration at that point that Jen has just made, so that we, we have more free time to have longer conversations without extending our times at night. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Okay, well, thank you all for engaging deeply and being willing to just sort of dive right into all of these topics that we've been discussing. We are closing now for today the discussion into these different sections of the strategic plan, and we have just a little bit more before we release you into the rest of your Saturday afternoon here. But one thing that I found when I was talking with Jessica and Paul planning the session is that, you know, I heard that there are, there are a number of new council members here, and that you don't get that much time to just sort of hear from each other in a knot, to, to Paul's point that he just made, not in that sort of pressurized decision-making environment. So we thought it would be nice to just go around and give each person a brief chance to share a little bit about what made you decide to take on this role of service, what motivates you to serve as a town council member? And then additionally, just acknowledging the kind of extraordinary circumstances of this year that have put extra strain on everybody personally and also extra responsibility on the council, any reflections you want to offer on what it's been like serving during COVID? So with that, Paul or Jessica, any other framing you want to offer here for this go round?
No, I, yeah, I, this is, people will be very creative. This is great.
Okay, good. And so just a minute or two per person. And if you don't mind, I might just call on people, otherwise in Zoom, it takes forever for people to think who's sort of supposed to go next. But do we have an initial volunteer so that nobody's being sort of voluntold for the very first one? Anybody ready to jump into that prompt?
I'll volunteer to move this along. So I had been asked about three times to run for council, and it wasn't until I was told that there would be no counselor from Precinct Three if I didn't step up. And so, and that's the first time I realized how difficult it was to be a counselor and how many hours it takes, and, but it was a great way to really give back to the community and be of service to the community. So I'm very happy to do that, and I understand that our lives are all changing all the time with ailing parents and raising our children and looking at our professional lives and paying our bills. So that's a reality, and on top of that, we're looking at the broader community and how we become a really good active member of the community. So I, I'm happy to be doing what I'm doing, and I thank all the people who went before us and all the current counselors for being willing to give up really a part of their lives to be of service to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Now I'm just going to go across my screen as it appeared, and keep it to one to two minutes per person, please. And Gordon, you're in my upper corner here, please. Just.
Okay, thank you, I got it. I'm, I'm a new counselor in Barnstable Village, I haven't been here quite a year yet. I retired school teacher, I was on the Infrastructure and Energy Committee, and realized that a lot of the real decisions are made here at town council. So I've lived in the village for 40 years, so I know a lot of people, I know their issues, and it's been interesting so far. It's been tough not being able to be in the same room with everybody, but we'll get there someday. Thank you.
Jessica?
Sorry about the glare there. Well, let's see, 2011 is when I first became a counselor, and I, I think it was just because I love the town of Barnstable, grew up, was born and raised here in Catuitt, and still enjoy both my parents, and do a lot of shell fishing and spent a lot of time enjoying our wonderful natural resources, and, and want to be a part of maintaining them and improving them, specifically water quality is big for me. But I love serving the community and, and love getting to know everybody as well, and it's been enjoyable to be able to be effective in helping people solve their problems, and I'm happy to do it. The COVID, I don't know, can I segue into COVID?
Yes, please.
So yeah, the hardest thing is not being able to come together, and it's a, when you're on Zoom, you really, you lose the nuances of being in person and feeling everybody's energy, and, and this is tiring, this format for sure. But I've gotten to know my, my family so much better, and kids that were not living around here or have been here, and grandkids, and it's kind of been a blessing for, for me. But I hope everybody stays healthy, and I hope we can get together very soon.
Thank you, Jessica. Chris, and then on deck is Tracy. Thank you, Jessica. Uh, Chris, and then on deck is Tracy.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Like David, Tracy and Gordon, I too am a new councillor as of this past November. Um, I have, in the past, I have served on several town committees, the Shellfish Committee, Town's Open Space Committee, which executed the land bank funds. And then the Land Acquisition and Preservation Committee. One of my motivations was, um, was that I had felt that plans are worked on, developed and paid for and then not properly or fully utilized. I feel that very same way with the Town's Open Space and Recreation Plan, in which I have worked for over three or two intervals of five to seven years. And I feel that, um, often plans like these, including historic and a, a, a whole list of plans, are, um, are collecting dust, I'm sorry to say. So perhaps we can dust those off and those can be a focus of our future workshop um, along the way. And perhaps we need to meet three times a, a month to, um, to bring in a workshop. Um, regarding the COVID, I think I agree with Vice President Jessica Rapgrisetti that the Zoom has, brings a new opportunity to bring, um, more public and quite frankly, my participation. I was visiting with my mom when I was able to participate in a Zoom Shellfish Meeting that otherwise I would not have done so. Um, on the other hand, I think some people drop off who are those who are more technically challenged. So I do think that we lose a segment of our population that way. But thank you for this opportunity to weigh in. Appreciate it.
Tracy, and then on deck is Deborah.
Um, also a newbie, I guess what motivated me is, you know, the reality is this is probably something I've thought about for 35 years. So since I was in high school, um, I used to actually go to town meetings in high school because I'm a nerd. Um, but much like Jessica, I was born and raised here, so love of my hometown more than anything. Um, I also happen to live in the lowest voting, probably most disadvantaged precinct in the town, which as a disadvantaged full-time law school student who bought at the peak of the market, that's how I wound up here. But as it's turned out, I absolutely love my community. Um. Reflections on serving during COVID? Uh, I think a couple of things. One, I suppose I'd always hoped coming on the town council when I did, that national politics would really never come into play. And I don't know that it did on the town council. I think what was sad was seeing that come into the town in terms of people's hand on the other are dealing with it. Um, but by the same token, what was amazing was once again, my eternal optimism for my community and knowing the heart of my community was seeing the way everyone came together, whether it was to support the school kids with, um, food and seniors and, um, so I think it was great to see the best brought out in us, um, but also hard to see sort of some of the crisis that took place as well.
Yeah, thank you. Deborah, and then Matthew is on deck.
Uh, yes, I was motivated by, um, these, the special way that this town, um, has its, its, its governance, um, the town meetings. And I was, uh, motivated by a Cape Verdean woman named Eugenia Forts, who used to always come to the town council meetings. And I was with her, I used to sit out there. So I was on the other side and, um, seeing her, um, and having her encourage me, uh, to think about, uh, running for town, uh, actually running for school committee first, um, to represent the community in which I live. Um, and to, um, uh, and I also wanted to learn a little bit more about, uh, town government. And so as I'm the, probably the senior councillor here, I've been on the council longer than anyone else at, at this point. And that has come about, um, um, because of many changes through, of the council. Uh, what's been consistent on the council for me has been the department heads. I've seen many of the department heads, um, uh, change. Um, I remember when Mark Ls was, uh, DPW Director. I remember when, um, Santos was with the, uh, Airport Commission. And so I've seen them in different roles and to see them in the roles that they are now. So that's been pretty consistent and they've all been very supportive. That's what's kept me here. Um, the councillors themselves have changed over, uh, my 11 years on the council, uh, three times, matter of fact. Um, but I've enjoyed meeting a lot of the, uh, people from other villages because we are kind of separated, our own villages. And so, um, I have enjoyed working with the council and I have participated because I've been encouraged to, to get engaged, to represent, um, those that look like myself. Um, in terms of the COVID, I think that it has, um, um, I somewhat enjoyed it because you, you, you do have an opportunity to be, um, to kind of be at home and get a lot more things done at the same time, attend, attend the town council meeting. I'm, I'm, I'm a little older than some of the other councillors, so the late night meetings, um, a bit of a struggle. Um, I'm also a little bit technically, technically, um, challenged. Um, so zooming into Zoom meetings and learning some of this new technology has, uh, has helped a lot. And so, um, I, I think one of the things I've gotten out of the COVID is, is the, the ability to learn new technology and, and, and see, uh, what it can do. And so, anyhow.
Thank you. Matthew and then Paul is on deck.
The reason why I ran, so I've always kind of, whatever I kind of belong to, I've always been kind of in the thick of things. And so this was an opportunity to, um, and I'm always looking for ways to serve. It, it energizes my batteries. It's almost, it's almost selfish to serve for myself because it is what I like, being part of the solution. I truly just love helping other people and, and, um, bringing a smile to people's faces and, um, listening to people and trying to bring their perspective, you know? Um, you know, maybe it's a hero complex or something like that. Uh, but at the same time, um, also want to be an example to my children to show that they need to get involved, that they need to serve in their community. And, um, no matter who it is that they may be, where they come from, what their background is, socio-economical, race, whatever it might be, uh, male, female, that, uh, listen and that this, everybody's on the journey. And, uh, there are different aspects of life and it's just better to listen and be able to relate because you'll learn so much. I've learned so much from being a part of, uh, the town council, um, from my fellow councillors, staff members, uh, things I've learned to even be a better father and a better husband. Um, which is, you know, ultimate, the ultimate goal, um, is to be a success at home and, uh, be able to balance all those things. I, I am probably a, uh, a bit of a self-professed workaholic. I have a lot of, uh, things I like to juggle and, um, and, and again, uh, try to accomplish as much as I can in life. Uh, early on in my life, it was more of a, um, a money-driven type of things, uh, but goal-oriented at the same time. Now, uh, I've probably gotten away from that and that kind of segues right into the COVID thing. Um, uh, COVID has been extremely difficult for me. Uh, there's, there's, I'm trying to think of good things. Uh, they're really, quite honestly, other than just learning to be stretched, uh, that's probably about it. But it's been a lesson in trying to look at the glass half full and remember that I am blessed of where I live and my friends and, and family. But, uh, right off the bat, I lost my business. And then within a week, um, COVID ran through my house. And my wife was the 33rd person to test positive in the county of Barnstable. And, um, it, again, it was a very worrisome time. Um, you know, some ways because of my business being lost, uh, I lost a sense of purpose. My wife wasn't able to work. Um, and so, yeah, so that's, uh, I'm still, you know, I'm digging myself, we're digging ourselves out of that. Uh, very, uh, thankful for friends and opportunities that have kind of, um, helped us stay, uh, to zero, so to speak, that we're not, uh, going to lose anything or have to move or anything like that. But it's been, but at the same time, my son Connor, 10 days before, uh, uh, COVID really hit, what is it, that uh, Friday the 13th, then March 13th, 10 days prior to that, we found that Connor had a, almost a full ride scholarship to Penn State and things. And so God, if I had to worry about that right now, he's my oldest. And, um, you know, and the other three, trying to figure out where they're going to go to school, how they're going to go to school. Connor's doing remote, Penn State from home. Um, my wife's back to, my wife's working full-time. Um, she was, she loved being a stay-at-home mom, but she's working full-time for the first time ever, actually, in our 21 years of marriage, which is fine. You know, I have no problem kind of being Mr. Mom and, and doing the things that we've always kind of worked together in that way. So that more falls on me. But again, it's been difficult. Uh, and as you could probably imagine, you know, stress on finances, stress on marriage, stress on kids. Um, but them going back to school will be good for them and good for us in a lot of ways. So, um, anyway, that's, it's it. But again, as you can see, you know, um, I'm very blessed. Uh, we're very happy. Um, and at the same time, but again, again, it's just to be honest, it has been difficult, but I appreciate you all. And, you know, uh, the technical aspects of Zoom, I guess it's been helpful. And it hasn't been too much of a challenge for myself because I did work in front of a computer all day beforehand. But, um, you know, I appreciate all of you. Thanks for listening. I probably went over my two minutes, but, uh, thanks.
That's okay. Thanks. Um, Paula, and then Jen.
Even though I wasn't born here on Cape Cod, I've, I've been here almost 25 years and I feel that same bond that if I wasn't a wash ashore, um, because this is just one of the most beautiful places to live on the planet. Um, I started my public service in the town of Barnstable as a housing commissioner for the Barnstable Housing Authority. And I can't believe I actually served 16 years. Um, fortunately, I never had opposition, so it was easy to, except I had to get 150 signatures every time I was on the ballot. So that was the, the largest challenge. Uh, I had thought briefly of running, oh gosh, in 2013, when I stepped down from the Housing Authority Board, but you know, life was busy, so I deferred. Uh, in 2017, I kind of had two motivations for running for council. Um, one was, I guess, what was happening on the national level. Uh, I felt that there has been so much polarization. And, you know, people, there, there was no way for, you know, people who might have little different viewpoints, how do you come together and come up with a, a solution, a compromise? And I felt that that was an important thing to try to do. And so I wanted to run for office and be able to work with my colleagues to, to craft solutions for the public. And I would have to say, I feel pretty positive about my experience. I know we, we have disagreements here and there, some conflicts and friction, but overall I have felt that it has been a positive experience working, you know, locally. And, and, you know, we, we make the important decisions, you know, most of what we're deciding about is having more impact on people's lives than what happens at the state and national level. The other reason that motivated me was, um, on some, I, I, I did, collected signatures, uh, for someone's campaign. And so I had a chance to walk around, uh, most of my precinct before I had even contemplated running for office. And I just was struck by the variety of folks that live, in, in this case, Marston's Mills. And, you know, it seemed like a number of those households were struggling. So I wanted to also do my part to see what we can do as a town to help those who don't have as much as some of us do. Uh, life during COVID, um, I've had a fairly fortunate experience. Uh, I have been able to continue working in my office, uh, because of, you know, it's a very small office. So I haven't had to do too much of that. Living on Cape Cod, you know, so many outdoor resources. I mean, we're now in that season where we can really, you know, be able to, you know, do recreational things and even have small gatherings outside. I think as we move into the fall, it's going to be more challenging to kind of close in again. Um, I'm hoping that we have the flexibility going forward as elected bodies to continue to meet in some hybrid form. I, I would really like to return to meet in person, at least maybe on a monthly or some basis. But to the extent that we can also incorporate Zoom into our, our town council and, and committee meetings, I think that's actually a positive because I think there's some benefits to being able to, again, being able to participate in a meeting when you're somewhere else is, is a positive. So that's my contribution. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen, and then David.
Yeah. So, um, let's see, I ran for office. Jessica and I were elected the same year, so 2011. Um, at that point, I owned C Street Market on C Street in Hyannis. And I remember, um, one person with a town of Barnstable coat would come in almost every night for a bottle of wine. And then one day, the Barnstable Patriot was there back when it was Reliable Paper. And I held it up and it was John Clem. And I had no idea because I just moved here from Boston. I grew up in Orleans. I was born in Cape Cod Hospital. But I had just moved here in Boston and I bought this market, um, that was completely rundown and, um, in a neighborhood that was completely underappreciated. And, um, so he said to me one day, you know, you should really run for town council. Hyannis needs an advocate like you. And so I blame him, um, for everything. Um, but from there, um, you know, I had, I, I've only ever had one person run against me. Um, and, um, I guess I've really focused most of my time on bolstering opportunity, equal opportunity for all people. Whether you're, um, a property owner in downtown Hyannis, with people camping in their backyard, or the people camping. Something fair for everybody. And then also I've really focused on, you know, trying to make a equal opportunity for, for youth that may not have grown up in the same kind of, um, system that I did. Um, and so it's funny though, I've been reflecting a lot on my time at town council and, and what it's meant for my family. And from back in the market when, you know, I was working 180 hours a week with a newborn baby who just turned 13 today. Um, it's, it's just crazy, the, the way life takes you and how many opportunities have presented themselves since then. For both my husband, who has many jobs that he's garnered from, he does construction and finished carpentry that he's done, that he's made from friends we had back then to, you know, just deep friendships from people who frankly worked with the town, you know, 10 years ago, like Joanne Miller-Buntich, who, whose vision for C Street finally came online last night when they lit the lights. So the C Street renovation project is done. And if you haven't, if you haven't come down, you should come down and see it. It is absolutely gorgeous. So it's a good time to reflect on, on my neighborhood and I'm, I'm thankful to be here representing the people that I do represent. Um, COVID's been a real challenge, absolutely. Um, I think not meeting face-to-face, there's a palpable difference for me. Um, I'm in the Suffolk MPA program now. That was, first day of classes was today too, so I missed that. But, um, but you know, it's another opportunity that's opened up. It was supposed to meet in town hall, but now it's all remote. I'm really looking forward to a vaccine and, and, you know, moving past this. And I would support definitely hybrid meeting. Um, where maybe even if six of us can meet in town hall and, you know, six of us stay home or whatever and we mix it up in a Zoom. I think, you know, when we're together, we do things better. And we're stronger when we can feed off each other's energy and, and, um, and work toward things in a positive way. Um, so, you know, I like, I, to my point earlier about civic engagement, I mean, I, I hope we all are bringing people along with us on this journey so that we're not just working, um, in, in a bubble and expecting somebody to pop up behind us to take the reins, um, because it's very much a relay in my opinion. And not everybody needs to care a hundred percent about the exact same things. But there does need to be, I think, a certain amount of tutelage, um, when it comes to the job because it's, there's big projects on the horizon for us. And, um, in this day and age, if you're, you know, if you're planning on running or you're at the end of your tenure or whatever, you need some guidance. Um, and so I hope we can all reach back and help somebody else step into the shoes that we're, that we're, that we're walking out of. Um, I think that's a really important part of it is some continuity. We've had that for years in the corner office and we're really, really lucky to have that. And then finance, but you know, for a town council, it's, we've got some really big looming issues and a lot of community healing that needs to happen, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you. David, and then Paul.
Um, first, let me say, Matt Lebec, thank you for once again confirming, uh, the fact that you're the nicest person I've ever met. Um, you know, this is probably going to sound arrogant. Why did I run? Um, because I thought it would be selfish if I didn't. Um, the diversity of experience that I've been fortunate to live is such that I often say, why me? Um, yeah, I'm black. Uh, I was born in Chicago, Illinois. A single mother who raised two boys, um, who lived there in that environment for the first 12 years of my life. Before she moved us to another community in Illinois, uh, Highland Park. Uh, fair, fair to say, upper middle class, predominantly Jewish. And so that was the culture that I came to experience then. Um, I then was fortunate enough to become a lawyer. Uh, work today in a very large law firm. I'm a partner, 600 plus lawyers, 21 offices. Um, I have a I have a corporate practice, represent, you know, very name brand companies. And so I often say, why me? Why not some other black kid that was born on the south side of Chicago? And so you finally get to the point where you say, well, that's fine, but what are you gonna, what are you gonna do with it? How are you gonna give back? And I ultimately felt I could make a difference. And you get to that point where there were things that are happening and you just say, that's not the way government is supposed to work. And if I don't do anything now, shame on me. As far as serving during COVID, it hasn't really affected the service as far as I'm concerned. The hardest thing is not seeing my my kids. I have four kids, three of whom I've not seen since Christmas. I have three grandchildren I haven't seen since Christmas. I have a fourth one that was born Wednesday. God only knows when I'll get to see him. And then I have a daughter who's pregnant now with her first and is due in either December or January. I'm hopeful I get to see the baby when that one's born. So that's basically it. I found it gratifying. It's very frustrating. But then again, I was involved in law firm management. So if you can deal with lawyers, you can deal with constituents and fellow counselors. So that's it.
Thank you, David. Paul and Eric, thanks for waiting. You'll be last.
First of all, I just have to thank the counselors and also the staff for sharing over this Saturday. I ran, sassed to run, I ran, I'm not very political. But I'll keep it short. I am motivated by the really the interactions and insights that I've gained from all of my fellow counselors, the staff, and also the wonderful people in town. I enjoy working through our differences of opinion and all of our combined efforts to find a middle ground that benefits ultimately the residents of the town. I think that's kind of the mission statement. At least that's the way I view it. As far as COVID is concerned, from a meeting standpoint, I do miss the face to face interactions. However, I do think it's allowed many residents of the town to actually listen and participate if they desire in our meetings. An additional benefit is that I don't have to wear dress pants and nor do I have to wear shoes, which is very nice in terms of town council meetings. With that, I'll leave it up to Counselor Steinheber.
You don't have to wear shoes in town hall, Paul. You can just come in and kick them off.
Excuse me, but Counselor Neary, didn't you say it was Counselor President Jim Crocker who told you to run for town council? That's why you ran because he
That is true. That is true. Counselor Rafferty, that is, he called me while I was headed to a Red Sox game in the city up in Boston and told me I immediately had to put my papers in, although I couldn't physically do that. So my wife was inscripted into that service. And I guess the rest is history from there.
Yeah, I think you only had four days left to get them in or something like that. Well, like some of you, I grew up here in town, moved away for about a dozen years. But when I was in high school, that was actually my first visit to town council. I was in Mr. Reed's American Government Class. And he used to take a bunch of us over to watch town council meetings. And actually, I remember in that class, if your grade was high enough, you didn't have to take the final. But I didn't have to take the final on that class. So I guess I was predestined for something in government. But yeah, moved away for a while, came back, got involved in a lot of different groups, charitable groups and service organizations on the Cape. Not something I talk a lot about. It's just something I do. And once I became a dad, definitely got involved in things with the kids and have them along for different stuff, kind of what Matt alluded to, you know, getting your kids involved in the community as well. And then I actually ended up running for State Center. That's how I met Jimmy Crocker because he decided to run against me. And Crocker's got a lot of name recognition on the Cape. No one knew that. So it's difficult. But Jimmy and I became friends during that race. He obviously beat me. And then I ran for county commissioner, actually, a couple of years later. And we talked a lot about sewers back then. This was in twenty twelve. And some of the things that we talked about then are things that we're implementing now, which is kind of neat to see. But I lost that race. I got almost fifty thousand votes and it wasn't enough that year to win. But I kind of thought I was done. Two Capewide races, back to back, you know, two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, so I was kind of done. And but a lot of people locally in the precinct asked me to run for town council in twenty thirteen. So I got close down to the deadline and finally relented and said, okay, I'll go get the signatures. So I ended up winning. And, you know, next year, I'll be starting my eighth year come November. This is my fourth iteration of a council makeup of members since I've been on. We have tackled a lot of stuff in my time. We've really accomplished a great deal. There's things that we have tackled, things that we're tackling now that previous councils probably wouldn't have had the stomach for. So I'm really proud to be, you know, part of really tackling some big issues in town. Like I said, I grew up here. So a lot of my motivation is just, you know, I want Barnstable to be just like a shining example of, you know, one of the best cities or towns you could possibly live in, not just in Massachusetts, but really in the country as well. And, you know, really lucky to live here. Happy to be raising my kids here. You know, so being back home after being away for a long time has been very satisfying. And like I said, I really enjoyed working with all the different groups here on on town council. And still got some time ahead of me and looking forward to, you know, adding to that list of accomplishments that we've all, you know, worked on collectively. As far as COVID, I am looking forward to getting back to in person meetings. I'd like to help Matt out and get back to some concerts and some ballgames. So I had a few things on deck this summer, but they're postponed until next year. But hopefully we stay on the track we're in. We're getting back to some some sense of normalcy. So hopefully that continues. We're certainly in a much better place than we were, you know, into March and April. So look forward to, I know I've seen some of you socially over the past several months, but hopefully we can all get together again soon. Thank you.
Thank you. That was, I feel very lucky to have gotten to hear all of that. It's kind of, it's just very optimistic and inspiring. So thanks for sharing and also for sharing the parts that are harder. And I hope that that does a small amount to counteract all of the challenging conditions under which you're trying to learn how to work together. And so just to kind of wrap us up and then to get you out into the world for the sunny afternoon. In terms of next steps, I will do a sort of closer review of all of the sections that we discussed today and try my best to sort of sort into what are potential edits to the strategies and what are just other notes that I want to send you forward with and share that back with you all to review. And I think I just, I don't feel like we quite resolved the question of how, if at all, you all want to make it possible to submit sort of further comments. And so I just wanted to check in on that question and maybe first to Paul and Jessica, if you have any sort of guidance on that. And then if appropriate, we could kind of test with the group. Do you know what I mean, the question I posed? You're, oh, you're muted, Paul.
Thank you. I thought, did you say that we would have some extra comments now? Or had we all agreed that you could send it to you for the next two weeks? And then you would incorporate those thoughts in a separate section that we would know that those were turned in after the this meeting?
Right. So what we did discuss, and I just don't know if there's sort of agreement around this, is that I'm happy to receive things by email and I can sort of note to which section they relate, but not incorporate them into the section if that's appropriate. But I wasn't sure if there was total comfort with that approach either, so I just wanted to check.
I'd be open to Jessica's thoughts and any of the counselors, whatever.
Well, I think that's fine. I think a draft should be put out. And I think counselors should have amendments to the draft or, you know, things that they forgot or even address sections that we didn't even discuss. I know the chief of police, you know, had input and actually added a strategy, which I I don't know how my other counselors feel about it, but I certainly would look to adopting that into the public safety. But as far as completely, you know, incorporating someone's point that that was not discussed, I had a little issue with that. So as long as you delineate that it's a comment to what's, you know, what you've taken from today's meeting.
Okay. And it won't be your only bite of the apple because you can review the draft that I'll submit back to you. But is, does anybody have any discomfort with that approach that I've named?
Gordon has his hand up.
Yes.
I was going to bring up what Jessica just brought up about, I would sort of suggest that we add that in now. That Mark Ellis talked about that the police chief wanted a statement in the public health and safety section about community policing, community policing strategies. It's sort of an emphasis that we want to move that forward. Do you agree, Jessica? I think he wanted, I think he wanted, if we could put that in now, it might save a step or?
Certainly. And I think Cindy can forward that to Elizabeth, all the counselors. I am not sure if you received, import that public health and safety to support the development use of community policing strategies, diversion programs and education efforts in combination with effectiveness.
Yeah, he showed it to us this morning.
So do you have this, Elizabeth, or Cindy can?
I have what was in the slide.
Did all counselors receive it? I want to make sure everybody's had an opportunity to look at it, but I know it was not one of our
Cindy circulated it.
But the fact that they went out of their way to, you know, participate and have that input, I think it should be incorporated.
Any concerns with that? We haven't had much time to deliberate on it, but.
I did circulate it to everybody, but if you have not received it, let me know and I'll resend it.
Okay, does it please the counselors if even the police chief's report be put on as an addendum? So that it sticks out, so that we can kind of look at that and it could actually be part of the final product. Counselor Tracy has something to say there.
Thank you. Is, maybe a better question is, is there anyone who would be adverse to adding that bullet point as part of the strategy? Because I'm good with it.
I think it's good to add, it was written a certain way too, to make it so we're eligible for community policing grants. But if it's not, we're not eligible for the grants.
Okay.
Elizabeth, do you have a sense of where to do this and what to add? I don't.
Yes, will you just put a note like in the bottom of the document just to remind me to do it, but I do know what it is to do.
Okay.
On the public health and safety.
Yeah. It's from, it's from a presentation this morning, Toby, so I've got it. Okay, not hearing any concerns, I will insert that in. And and feel free to send me any other comments. I will compile them and add them, but not sort of integrate them with what was discussed during our session today. And we've given everybody until September twenty eighth to do that. Okay, well, that's all for me in terms of logistics. And I just appreciate all of you taking the time to do this. It was a long day and I think we made a lot of progress. Let me just give it to Paul to close us out.
Thank you very much for that. And for right now, Jessica, do you have some closing comment?
Well, my only closing comment with regards to the graphics of our strategic plan, that, you know, I guess we're going to continue using the spokes and where the rubber meets the road. So I would say that it's going to be revised that the finance, which is the rubber part of the tire there, is going to include communication. We're going to take communication out of the spoke, right? Just to be clear, I just wanted to make sure that that was going to at least be reflected in the new graphics of the strategic plan. But I'm happy to see everybody and glad that we, this is hundred percent of the council present, which is great.
So in closing, I want to thank all of you. Everybody made sacrifices to be here today. Jen, especially to miss the first day of your classes is saying something that you chose to be with us. Thank you very, very much for doing that. Appreciate it. And happy birthday to Dante. And so again, thank you all for participating. I think this was very, very fruitful. We worked hard on the preliminaries to try to make this a meeting that was meaningful for all of you and to come up with a very good strategic plan. I could not be prouder to serve with all of this council. This is an outstanding council. We are a strong council and it's a privilege to work with each and every one of you. So again, thank you. Enjoy the rest of your day and be well.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Pleasure. Take care. Bye, Cynthia. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.